... pass seven and I'm going to call the meeting to order. Can I have a second to the agenda?
Second.
Second, Mr. Chair, a second wish to a tool on favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great, that is unanimous. We'll start with walk-ins, are there any walk-ins this evening? I see none. So we'll move on to the report of the town administrator.
Thank you. I have three items that I would like to update the board on. The first is a report on the Fourth of July observance this past weekend. I'm happy to report that there were no major incidents and that the fourth year of the bonfire ban worked extremely well and there were mostly just isolated campfires. But I do have a report from the fire and the police chief. The police department had 195 calls during the Fourth of July observance weekend, which is typically Thursday to Sunday night, so that's the period, 195 calls. There were nine arrests over that period, seven with minors in possession of alcohol, two disorderly, made up that nine. There were four protective custodies and two motor vehicles. Most successfully, I guess, was that the police department, as you know, implemented a knock cam policy and the police officers started carrying knock cam in the last two months and they had their first two successful knock cam deployments on July 2nd and July 3rd. In both cases, the officers arrived quickly on the scene, initiated CPR, and deployed the knock cam and both patients regained consciousness and were transferred to South Shore. As you know, our fire department's been doing this for years and have saved a number of lives, but now with our police, we also have another resource there to assist people in need, so I think that's good. On the fire side, Fourth of July 3rd and July 4th, there were seven EMS runs, two fire calls, motor vehicle accident and two investigations. Same on the Fourth of July, were seven EMS calls, three fire calls. So I just want to commend police, fire, DPW, recreation, all those folks who work, but particularly our residents and their guests for complying with the town's request to abide by the law and our rules and regulations and I think everybody had a great time, so. Related to that, and what I really want to talk about is my second item, is this year already, even though it's only July 7th, our beaches have seen an unusually high incidence of attendance and our beach sticker sales are exactly the same for the same period last year, but they were all purchased a lot sooner than they had been in previous years. So whereas we would run out of Humrock stickers the end of August, we've already run out. So we have a maximum of 200 we buy and then we've ordered another 100. So I just want folks out there to be aware that if you go to the beach, you may find that all the parking lot spaces are filled. And some folks may think that with the brand-new basketball court at Humrock, there's less parking spaces, but actually the redesign there created six new spaces, so there's actually six new parking lots. But for you who are here this weekend, I'm sure you saw a lot of activity, a lot of great people in town, but the beaches have been wildly popular and we expect that to be the case and maybe some parking was going to disappoint people who'll go a little later. In response to that, we've also had attendant issues with double the amount of trash and double the usage of the porta-potties. So we have regular schedules for both of those. We even had extra DPW people onboard this past weekend for trash. We cannot keep up with it, we actually have to look at some other solutions for that. We encourage people to carry in and carry out. There's a number of instances where people are doing, disposing of their household trash, particularly at the dumpster at the Maritime Center, Egypt Beach, and also we're looking at maybe getting some more porta-potties, but also cleaning them. I mean, they're cleaned regularly, but just the sheer volume of people using the beaches is increased over last year, so I just want to assure you that we're having discussions around that and I'm happy to answer any questions or anything you might want around that.
Anything else before events? Just two quick things, just to reiterate. So great that the police survived those people, but that means we have two ODs this weekend that they had to enforce that, so again, the facts is working hard on that, but just want to bear that in mind. The beaches were more crowded than I've ever seen at Peggy and Humrock, where I was, I'm sure, and Hills was probably packed also. So I was just going to bring that up also. I think that weekend was unique, but I'd like to see if the volume stays because if so, we've got to increase the barrels and the bathroom facilities.
Yeah.
But police chief said it was, you know, Humrock down there, it was a great night, you know, considering still a ton of people there, but everything was handled well and there wasn't anything outrageous. I know somebody had a hand injury from the firecracker or something went on, but that was good. Any other comments on the floor? Great. Anything else on the upcoming events, anyone? Carnival starts next week, on the 14th through the 18th, and Heritage Days is August 7th. And then August 15th, we have that shark presentation over at the library, at St. Luke's.
And my last item is for those of you who follow Boston and Boston Magazine, and some of you may be aware of this already, Lorraine actually brought this to my attention, the town has voted best of Boston South Shore for the best town center. We're very proud to accept that award and I think it was just a reflection of, as Tony said, he just mentioned a whole bunch of events and all the great things that are happening down the harbor with our merchants and our businesses and the EDC, so that's a step in the right direction, so we should take full advantage of it.
So I mentioned, I think John mentioned, the sidewalk painting, all the events that are going on down there, I started to write enough in Boston Magazine, so with all the merchants down there, they should be very proud of this and everyone should, anyone want to comment on that? Great, we'll put it up somewhere so people can see it and congratulations.
So take the bus, the slip to the harbor, and go see the crosswalks and eat at a restaurant and buy some stuff.
Why don't we take a second to just mention this loop. Gatra, our transportation entity, has started a shuttle service that goes from essentially town hall down towards the beaches along, I don't know the exact path, but I know it goes to the central housing, the library, the grocery store, senior center, golf course, train, high school, I'm trying, I'm missing a few stops.
So it's just a loop?
Just a loop. And again, if you all remember, we talked about this, there's limited funds for this and we weren't able to incorporate North City into the first bypass of this, but this is a pilot program that we're doing for this. It started on the 2nd, it's free for two weeks, and again, it's just a pilot program. Get out there and use it, you'll see the shuttle driving around, it says Gatra on the side, and I know my kids have used it and I think it's going to be a great thing for the town, so if you see that shuttle going around, I think you have kind of to wave it down. What I would like to do is if we can set up a meeting with them, maybe in a month, and kind of get feedback from the community.
Yeah, we also, they want to have a sort of a ribbon cutting too, so yeah, but I'll mention that to them as well.
That'd be great, we can just get together and kind of powwow and learn it, but overall, it's wonderful.
The only other thing I forgot to add on the best of Boston is our office has made up 40 copies of this and we're going to give them to all the businesses in downtown so they can stick them in the window.
Okay.
So we'll be doing that, I'll be doing that tomorrow, so I can touch base with folks.
Great.
And that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Anything else for the county administration? Okay, so let's move on to another recognition that we got. Should we have, I don't know that we have to read it. The financial department, basically led by Trish McGezy and Nancy Hope, won a federal finance award for outstanding, I know I butchered it, so Trish, you can help me here, excellence in financial reporting. So they, I assume that there was some sort of documentation they've had to prepare for an audit and we went to them and we got it, and the work that was done and the analysis and the detail, we received this federal award that says, "A certificate of achievement of excellence in financial reporting presented to the town of Situate, Massachusetts, and both Tricia and Nancy got one also, for a comprehensive annual financial report for the year ending June 30th, 2014." So this is something the town's never done before and it's a huge prestige award and I'd like to thank both of you and congratulate both of you on a great job on doing that. I think Nancy, did you hold up what you had to present to them, is that what?
This is what it looks like and it's actually on our website, it's on the county department's webpage, and we've already started for fiscal 2015, started the work for that, and it's certainly, every department took part in it because if you will find the back section, which is the statistical section, it's got 10 years' worth of history on all different kinds of things, from how many miles of water mains we have to how many motor vehicles accidents we've had the last 10 years.
Great. Well, congratulations, great job, and we just want to give you guys a minute. Anyone have anything to add to that?
I just want to say thank you, it's a great achievement, hard work.
Yes, sure.
John, I just want to say, Mr. Chair, you know, there are a lot of, some people, usually a very small minority, but there's always somebody out there always complaining about facts and figures. And you know, this award, I think signifies, from a federal level, what your town is doing for disclosing transparency, something that we've talked about for a number of years to make sure. This reaffirms it. So if there are any naysayers out there, by all means, go to the website, read what we got the award from the federal government on. And I just want to say thank you, both Tricia and your whole departments, you know, Nancy and so on, I mean, it's everybody involved here at town hall, doing their job and just giving the facts and figures and presenting it in a very cogent, efficient manner, so well done.
Thanks, John. So the next, we have another recognition, which is the MMA Mopley Center for Public Management and Suffolk University Certificate Program Candidates. So Tricia, can you tell us a little bit about the program?
Sure. I provide a little memo to the board. It's a joint program offered by the Mass Municipal Association and the Suffolk University Mopley School of Management, and it's offered geographically around the state once a year to municipal employees who are interested in learning more about local government, but it's graduate-level work equivalent to 15 graduate credit programs in courses such as finance and budgeting, human resource management, collective bargaining, policy analysis, leadership. And we had seven applicants who wanted to participate in this program. It was every single Friday, all day, from September to last month. I selected three people to attend that program, Deputy Fire Chief at the time, John Murphy, Rick Moska, who is our acting DPW sewer superintendent, and Linda Hayes, our council and agent director. The cost of the program, I think, I could be wrong, it could be more, is $2,500, it escapes me. That was shared half by the employee and half by the town under our training budget in addition to giving them permission to attend Friday, all day, papers, presentations, tests, and the three of them graduated from that program at a graduate ceremony that was held at Suffolk two weeks ago in Boston. Jay Ash, the Secretary of Housing and Community Development, and Jeff Beckwith of the MMA were the speakers. And training such as this not only benefits the employee, but it certainly benefits the town and the community in terms of giving folks some skills. And as you know, that's something that we really developed in the last few years, there was money requested in the override, $30,000 a year, to provide management training to staff who are either appointed or promoted, such as lieutenants, captains, chiefs, for not being just a firefighter or a police officer anymore, but really getting skill in management training. So if I can, I'd like to ask them all to come up and shake their hand and congratulate them. Rick Moska, Linda Hayes graduated with honors, and Chief Murphy. So is the chief here?
Yep.
Thank you, Linda. Good job.
Thank you, good job, congratulations. Greg, thank you.
Thank you.
Chief, thank you as always.
And every single Friday, all day long?
Yes. They can probably tell you what a fun time it was.
At Suffolk? Yes. So again, just as John mentioned a second, we're just great things that we're doing in the town to help the town, to help the employees and to, you know, to further Austin, make it just a better place and a better operation, so thank you very much for the great work you put into that. Great, so let's move on to another discussion vote with the Situate Housing Authority vacancy. There's a member that we need to, well, we need to meet the candidate and then have a meeting and discuss. So if the candidate can just come up and introduce herself?
Sure. Am I going to sit here?
Sure. Or turn the mic so we can. So can you just give your name and address and then just tell us a little bit about yourself?
Sure. Can you hear me?
Yeah, that's just for television.
Oh, oh, okay. My name is Dorian Wang and I live on Beal Place in Situate. And I'm excited to be here because I've been interested in being on this committee for a very long time, so I'm happy that there's a vacancy. I'm hoping to contribute my background, which is in real estate, real estate development, property management and facilities direction. I'm not sure what, I can give you a little background, I guess, or?
You sent us your resume, it's very impressive. I know we all looked at it, there were three or four different facilities that you've worked at and like you said, developed property for over 55 communities and different initiatives that we're trying to incorporate here, so I think it's a great fit.
Great.
Any questions for Dorian?
You're filling out the term, I guess, I recognize for Ms. Judge, but how many more years, Mr. Chairman, does she have left to serve, is it one or two, do you know, or?
I think she was just, I think she had three.
So another two years to fill then, okay.
Okay.
It would be filled until May 21st, 2016, until the annual town election.
All right, so one year, one year, just there to, then you get to run for reelection.
Great, good to know.
And as John mentioned, Ms. Judge moved out of town and that's why she heard her first cases. Does anyone have any questions?
Just a comment. You know, thank you for stepping up and all your time. Sometimes it's difficult to find people to take the time to do this. Just a question.
Thank you very much. I'm looking, I'm looking to give back and I'm hoping I'm going to be helpful, so, so thank you.
And obviously, you've met all of them, do you guys have any questions for, or have already?
No, very exciting, very impressive and I think it should be a great addition.
Great, so why don't we, I think we have to have a roll call.
So point of order, this is a little different than your packet, you have to entertain nominations because this is unique for joint appointments. So somebody would nominate a person and then if they're, and then the chair would ask if there are any other nominations from the floor, and then that nomination gets voted, and then you can do the full motion for appointment. It's just sort of a parliamentary thing.
Do we have to roll back and start the meeting first, or?
Nope, you're fine.
I'll nominate Dorian Wang.
I'll second.
And now you ask if there's any other nominations.
Are there any nominations, any other nominations? Is it done? So now we'll have a roll call.
You'll entertain a motion to appoint Ms. Dorian.
I'll move to, I'll move to approve an interim appointment of Dorian Wang to the vacancy on the Situate Housing Authority until the annual town elections to be held on May 21st, 2016, at which time the housing authority position will be put on the ballot to fill the vacancy for the remaining term of years, to expire in 2019. Second.
Motion, Mr. Harris, second by Mr. Tool, any further discussion? Any discussion from the audience? Seeing none? Now we'll have a roll call.
Situate Housing Authority Board, Mr. Stephen Colter.
Here.
Yeah, A or N?
Oh, A.
Mr. Michael Collins.
Yay.
Ms. Teresa Martini.
Yay.
Ms. McDonald.
Yay.
And that's the one. Mr. Vannany.
Yes.
Mr. Danny.
Yes.
Ms. Karen.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
And Ms. Roser.
Yes.
Great. Sounds like you're there with us.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And good luck.
Thank you. Thank you.
So the next item is a discussion vote for the Situate Country Club change of manager. Is anyone here from, great. Hi. Give your name and address, please. Yes, Anthony Pacella, 119 Drifway, Situate. And you're here for change of manager, Situate Country Clubbing. So the old manager was Alan Kelly?
Yes.
And are you going to change it and you're actually going to be the new?
Yes, I am.
Great.
Or would I like to be?
But any discussion from the board?
You're actually a pot owner of the business as well?
Yes, and I'm the onsite, I'm the onsite, the onsite ownership presence since 2005, so.
And do you have, do you have any other standards outside of this in food management and?
I don't have, not in food management, but I've been active as treasurer since 1991 when we bought it. I'm very much involved with all of the activities and day-to-day goings-on. I do all the ordering, set up all the inventory systems, charge with all the people, so I've been doing it for quite a bit, quite a bit of time.
Any discussion from the audience? Great, if I see, have no discussion, a motion? Who to approve Situate Country Club's change of manager, John Pacella, Jr.?
Second.
Second by Mr. Tool, further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you, good luck. Of course, it's in good shape.
Thank you very much. Okay, the next topic is a discussion vote for a new drain layers license for excavating. How are you?
Hi, thank you.
If you can just give us your name and address?
Sure, Theodore Ringler, 44 Huey Road, Situate.
Great, so you're here before us to get a drain layer license?
Yes.
Is this just for one project, or is it?
No, I recently started my own business. I grew up here in town, I live here in town with my two kids and my wife, and I worked for Pete Spencer for the last two and a half years, and he's decided to downsize to basically himself, so I bought the majority of his equipment and took one of his longtime employees with me and we're going to hopefully pick up where he left off and just try to stay right here in town and.
Is that Richard? Richard?
Richard Patterson, 38 years.
He's much.
Yeah, so we're just going to try to follow how Pete's done it here in town for the last 50 years and so this drain layers license I need for sewer connections, things like that.
Just a comment. I know Ted, Ted has a lot more experience than, prior to working for Pete, he worked for another contractor out of England, so it's not like he's new at this, so just, so good.
Thank you. I recognize Ted for driving on the truck, so.
Thank you.
And he had a great, a great person to learn from and work with.
It's great, thank you.
If there's no other questions, a motion?
Move to grant a drain layers license to Ringler Excavating Corporation.
Second. Mr. Harris, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? It is unanimous, congratulations and good luck.
Thank you. Thank you guys. Thank you.
Okay. The next one is a discussion vote on some outdoor entertainment permits. Do you have people from Tilden Road, Tom Flaherty?
A lot of questions, it's personal.
Excuse me? Can I give you notes, sir? Give your name and address, please.
Tom Flaherty, 100 Tilden Road.
And what do you?
Uh, getting married. Having a party.
Good, good. And it's at your house?
It's actually at my neighbor's house. I'm at 100, it's at 114.
Great. And you are having a band, is that what it is, a?
Yep.
A band and it's on 7/25?
Yes.
From 6 till 10 p.m.?
Yes.
And you've notified all the neighbors?
Yep.
Invited most of them?
Invited all of them, I believe.
Disagree with your invite.
Yep.
Great, any questions from the board? Any from the audience? Another motion?
Move to grant an outdoor entertainment permit for a wedding on July 25th, 2015, from 6 to 10 p.m., 114 Tilden Road. Second.
Second by Mr. Danny. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, congratulations and good luck.
Thank you very much.
Great, we have another one, is there Leah Hammond here?
Thanks, Leah.
So Leah Hammond, was she supposed to be here?
Uh, yes. You're a little ahead on the agenda.
Hi.
She might have to come back.
We will definitely come back. Are Brian and Nancy Jones here?
Yes.
Yes. Kristen, come on in. Good, how are you? Give us your name and address, please.
I'm Brian Jones, 6 Michael Lab, my wife Nancy and daughter Alyssa.
So tell us a little bit about what you're doing.
Well, we're at 6 Michael Lab and Alyssa's getting married on the 5th of September, we're very excited about, and we are having it in our yard at our home under a tent and there is going to be a live band and so we're hoping that you're able to grant us an entertainment license.
Great, and it's on September 5th, as you said, from 4 p.m. until 11 p.m.?
4 to 11 p.m.
Go to 11. Right on Michael Lab, and have you notified all of your butters, all of your neighbors?
Yes.
I was going by the ladder, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Yeah, we're planning on wrapping it up around 10, but yeah, we just thought, yeah, just to be safe.
I wouldn't worry about it, that's Labor Day weekend, people are going to be awake that whole entire weekend, so.
What date of the week is that?
Saturday. Saturday, yeah, so.
Any questions from the board?
No.
Great, can I have a motion? Anyone want to make a motion? Further discussion? Seeing none? Any discussion from the audience? Great, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Awesome. Before we move on, is Leah Hammond here?
Hi. Hi.
Come on up and have a seat, oh, you can, you can stay at the seat.
I can stand, it's more standing for him.
So tell us your name and address, please, to start.
Leah Hammond, 33, Woodby Way.
Great, and tell us what you're doing.
Getting married at my house, at 33 Woodby Way, August 1st. It's from 4 to 11. There will be lots of young children there and bedtimes are before 11, I imagine that'll end before 11. We have a DJ, so we have notified all the butters except the Archbishop, which I assume is the cemetery behind us, so we did not send them a letter. Did that need to be, it was kind of a funny.
Any questions from the board?
Yeah, just one, is that the last house on Woodby?
Yes.
Last to the left.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Thank you, yeah. Yeah, it's great, we totally renovated it, right side.
Behind the meadows.
Oh, oh, okay. Great, any other questions? Great, seeing none, all those in, I'll have a motion.
Move to grant. Behind the meadows.
Oh, oh, okay. Great, any other questions? Great, seeing none, all those in, have a motion?
Move to grant outdoor entertainment permit for a wedding on August 1st, 2015, from 4 to 11, 33 Woodbine Way.
3 or 33?
33, right?
Yeah.
Yes, it's just a nice friend, I thought she was.
Great, second by Ms. Curran. Any further discussion? Any discussion from the audience? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous, congratulations.
Unanimous, thank you.
Have a great party. All right, we are moving right along. And now we will discuss an interview for the annual appointments. So I have so much people here, Elaine, I'm going to let you, I don't know who's supposed to be here.
I highlight the ones here.
Yeah, yours is highlighted.
The one you just passed out, Elaine?
The one that was up here?
Yes.
Yeah, it's all highlighted.
Great, so let's start by meeting with people that couldn't make it to the prior meetings and then we'll go from there. So for beautification commission, is Mary Ann here? Hi, do you mind coming up? Is it Polico?
Polico.
Polico. Wait, if you could just say your name and address?
Sure, Marian Polico, 16th and Driftway, Citewater.
Great, and just tell us a little bit about yourself and why you want to be on the committee?
Well, I moved to town about a year plus ago and I'd recently retired, so I'd like to somehow be involved in my new community and I thought this might be a good way to do it. I have, I've always done my own landscaping and, you know, so I've had a house for 50 plus years. And that's, that's about it, not formally trained.
Great, for that one, you don't need to be. Any questions from the board?
No, thank you.
Everyone had tested this for the last couple of weeks, we've seen everybody out there cleaning out their medians and really going to work and watering their plants, so it's a, it's a great job, makes our community look beautiful, so.
It's nice.
Appreciate all the work that everybody does, so.
Yeah, it'll be a good start.
So thank you for coming, we're going to vote, all of you, I won't repeat this, we're going to vote these at the end of the meeting. You don't have to stay, you can watch it on TV. Some of them we may postpone, yours probably will not be one of them, but we'd rather still meet everybody this evening.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And another, Mary Ann Miller?
Marian Miller, Seven Pannycress and Woodbine's neighboring friend. No, Citewater.
We won't hold that against you.
And I lucky.
Just kidding, yeah.
Name and address.
That's her name, yeah. I'm Seven Pannycress.
Just her.
Best neighbor.
Good, so, and you're applying for the Board of Health?
Sure, yes.
Sure, good. Why don't you tell us a little bit about what you do and why you want to be involved in that committee?
Um, well, I've been in the town for about three years and I've done all kinds of different work in public health, both in the state and federal level. I still teach public health at Stonehill College. So I have a few skills and so I'm just happy to share them. Ask me anything specifically, it's a broad field.
Great, have you been on any town boards before?
Now, I've been on a lot of boards for, with federal and state and educational boards and not-for-profit visiting nurse, Catholic high school, that kind of thing.
Any questions or comments from the board?
Just incredible education and background, Mary Ann.
I worked really hard, but I've done mostly work on entitlement grants, especially for poor and underserved. That's what my passion is, but I love my students.
Great, well, thank you for coming in and like I said, and I won't repeat this again, we're voting later on.
That's fine. How can you not want to do something when Anne is your neighbor and she's such a great person in the town of Citewater? Nice to meet you all, have a great night.
Anne must be ready for something this year. Great, the next person that possibly could be here is Doug White.
How are you? Good. Doug White, 33 Minor Light F, Citewater. I've grown up in Citewater all my life. And as you can see in the resume, I've worked with different companies in the food service industry, such as Burger King, Wendy's, and now my new role is with 7-Eleven as a field consultant. So I work with the franchisees that own the stores, keeping them, you know, clean, well-run and all that. And I've been on Little League in the town and also has been with the Knights of Columbus. I've been Grand Knight a couple of times, so. I've been around and given to the community, so.
Any questions? So, I would like to know, this board is very popular this year, so we've got three members looking for one spot. All very qualified members, so is there any other boards that you're also interested in, other than the Board of Health?
I haven't looked into any of the other ones, that one really.
Resonated?
Right.
Okay. Great, so we'll have, again, that's a tough one, I don't, is there associate position on that one or no?
No.
No, okay. Great, so we'll have to figure that out.
Was there any background information, did you include anything in your application or just your?
I did put my resume in.
You did?
Yes. And I'm food safety certified, choking, all those different, and have taught the classes and that.
Well, he took my job, so I can attest to everything he's been through as far as experience with cleanliness. It's a pretty incredible program, so.
Great, well, I was just going to say that I've known Doug for a few years now and when he had asked me, you know, what was involved with Board of Health or our liaison in the group, we hadn't, inside the liaison, hadn't had anyone with his background. You know, we've had attorneys, we've had developers and stuff like that, but not that I can recall, so. You know, I encouraged him to apply.
Great. Yeah, I think, I think you're very qualified for it.
For whatever reason.
Yeah, so, but again, we'll, you know, three people, one slot, so we'll figure out what happens there later on tonight. Good, well, thank you for coming in.
You're okay?
Um, is Brianna here?
She's right there.
All right.
On the camera.
Hi. Brianna Shafiro, 100 Glades Road, Citewater, Mass.
How are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Good. So tell us why you want to be involved on the cable committee?
Sure. I'm going on my third year as an employee at Citewater Community Television. I'm a communication major at Bryant University in Rhode Island, so I really want a career in the communication industry and this is a great way to kind of get more involved in Citewater. I'm already really involved at SCTV, but I want to start getting more involved in the town and definitely have an invested interest in the cable board.
Great, and are you, what year are you in?
I'm going to be a junior.
Okay. Do you think there'll be a problem with classes and coming to meetings and that sort of stuff, or?
Um, I don't think so. Um, I'm more or less going to be living at school for sure, but I'll be able to come back and forth, especially if the meetings can meet my schedule. Um, I know we're trying to make the meetings quarterly, so I'll be able to move them around like spring break, Thanksgiving, definitely the summer and then winter break.
Any questions for Brianna?
Have we ever had a student on the committee? That's pretty good. Just, I think so, commission.
And she gives great tours, we actually went. She was on tour.
Yeah, I was, yeah.
No other questions?
No, I think that's great.
We certainly know the workings of it.
I do.
For those who can't see, Brianna's filmed our meetings at night.
Yep.
And stepped in here for.
Yeah.
Who's maddying it now, but, um, great, thank you very much and we'll figure it out and vote at the end of the meeting.
Thank you. Yes, I will, thank you.
Okay, moving along. Is Aubrey Burke here? Aubrey? We'll come back to her later. Kristen Sherman? Hi, how are you?
Hi.
Hi. If you can give us your name and address?
Sure, I'm Kristen Sherman, 74 Lawson Terrace.
Great, and you're here applying for the Citewater Cultural Council?
Yes.
So tell us a little bit about yourself and why you want to be on that committee?
Um, well, I've worked in Boston for many years, I've lived in Citewater for eight, I think, and, um, now I work in Cohasset in the arts at the South Shore Art Center and I realized this is where it's at. But there's such a great art scene here and it was just a nice opportunity to, to get to know everybody in my own town, um, in the arts.
Any questions?
I ran into Kristen about a month ago and I found out she was resident and I said, you ought to apply and so I'm very happy that you did.
Oh, thank you, it's nice to see you again.
I'm gonna have to guess how many openings, there's so much.
Yeah, we're going to go through that later. We'll just, okay, good.
There's a lot on that one.
So I should recruit?
Great, well, thank you for coming in, nice meeting you.
Thank you.
As I told everybody. Is Chris Bagley here? Hey, Chris, how are you?
Good, thank you, sir. Good evening, I'm Chris Bagley, Liberty 47, Morpitt Ave. Applying for the traffic safety committee.
Traffic regulation, yep?
Yeah. I just recently returned to Citewater, I grew up here and I wanted to get involved with government issues and things like that here. Uh, my background, I have 18 years' experience with the Department of Conservation and Recreation, um, working for the signage division. Past 15 years I've been in charge of the shop. Basically, my background is public safety in regards to signage, pavement markings, traffic signals and I've worked a lot with the local municipal police and state police and things like that. But anyways, I saw this posting, I thought it'd be interesting and that's why I was going for the position.
We will fit, fit the role we take.
Actually, it was very interesting, it's like, oh wow.
Any questions for Chris?
Any other considerations for, with GCR background and everything, like the beach commission?
I live kind of near the beach, so one of the beach committees too was a second.
I was going to say, the beach commission would be a good one.
But I just didn't know how they overlapped or whatever, but I was really interested in the, um, safety part of it.
Great.
Or both, I don't know.
Take a look at the other one too, beach commission. You do well.
That sounded interesting, especially the new committee that just started.
Correct.
Chris came to the open house, so he's a great.
Yeah, I want to check it out.
Example of coming in and finding out what's going on and matching expertise with some of our openings, so.
Yeah, you helped me pinpoint that, thanks.
Chris, thank you very much for coming in, if there's other questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, Brian Cronin? Hi, how are you?
I'm good, I'm Brian Cronin, summer resident, 5 Dartmouth Street, Citewater. And I know that's an issue, but, um, two years as an associate on the waterways and 10 years as an assistant harbor master for summers, licensed captain and boat owner down here, so.
Great, so you've been associate for two years?
Yes.
Know the meetings, understand the formalities and all that stuff. As you said, there's a, you live in Milton?
Yes.
A summer here at your parents' house or something?
Yes.
So that's, there's a few people on the committee that we have to figure out how we're going to handle that tonight. At a previous meeting, we decided that it's just going to be up to everyone's own individual opinion. There's no policy whether it is or it isn't, so we'll deal with that a little bit later. Any questions for Brian? Yes.
How much time do you spend in Citewater during the summers? Because we've got other candidates in our other committees, so I'd like to be as consistent as possible in applying this uniqueness of summer residents yet.
Uh, every weekend.
Every weekend?
Yep. And, and some weeks, so.
And you were the assistant harbor master in Citewater?
Yes, yep. Yeah, '88 to '97, so with Bob Francis and then Elmer Fuller.
It's noted that Brian, you consistently showed up to the meetings.
Thank you.
Which was going to be one of my questions, which even though you don't necessarily, you have connections to Citewater with a second home, but I mean, the fact of Milton, that you still show up even during the times that you were in Milton, that's, that's good to see, thank you.
What's your professional background now? I know you were in a.
Uh, project manager, construction and IT. I did 10 years, uh, working in boatyards, selling marine supplies, but got out of that 15 years ago, yeah.
Thank you.
Any further questions for Brian? Great, thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Shirley Young? Shirley is applying for the water resource.
Yes. I'm Shirley Young, 24 Lasway, Citewater.
Great, um, can you tell us why you want to be, what your background is and why you want to be on this committee?
Uh, yes, I founded a nonprofit 501(c) organization called SAVI that provides safe drinking water to a developing country, so I'm very interested in water conservation and safe drinking water. And plus, my family lived in California, so they are under drought. So that heightens my awareness, no. That heightens my awareness of, of water and, and also I've been interning at a committee for the past few months, so I know how they operate and I've been attending the meetings.
Any questions for Shirley?
Shirley's been very active and helpful, I think, on the committee to date, just observing, she's been present, so she definitely is demonstrating her dedication, obviously has the expertise. And we have a lot of openings on water resources.
Any questions to my left? Great, so did you find, found that 501(c)(3), is that what you said?
Yes, I did.
And did you say it was for water sources in third world countries?
Yes, it's to provide safe drinking water, uh, in particular for water filtration and getting rid of microbes, yes.
Great, and where do you do that out, out of Citewater, out of Boston or where?
Uh, well, we do have, uh, that, the main offices in, out of, out of, out of Citewater and, but then we do have a lot of research, we have a research lab in North Shore and also I have a lot of board members throughout Massachusetts. And we also work with charity organizations to raise funding to provide the filters for the developing countries.
Are you a scientist or are you just?
Uh, I, I, I am, I have engineering background, both in electrical engineering and chemical engineering, not in environmental engineering, but I'm just very interested in water because it is the future gold. Without water, you know, we really can't survive, yes.
Great, thank you Shirley for coming in.
Thank you.
And Gerard Kelly? Oh, Jerry.
How are you, Jerry?
Great, how are you? My name is Jerry Kelly, I live at 56 Moreland Road. I've lived in Citewater since February of 1977. I've been auditing the Water Resources Committee meetings since January and haven't missed one. Like Shirley, I think that water is key to the public health and safety as we go forward and we need to manage that and align it with development in town so that we don't run out of water. I do not have a background in 501(c)(3)'s or water filtration or engineering. My background is in institutional finance and institutional asset management and I'm currently the CEO for a development stage drone company.
Great, any questions for Jerry?
I can attest that Jerry's attendance at the Water Resources Meeting, just like Shirley, so also has been a, a nice asset, observing the committee meetings.
Great.
Yeah, and I've two, I've been here with the group every single time. Jerry, if you get appointed to advisory, can you do both?
No, you can't.
Because of the Thursday nights?
No, because advisory, you can only serve on one committee, you can't serve on any other.
It's because of the separation of powers, that's the only thing.
This comes first?
No.
So, advisory?
Yes.
Are you on advisory?
Did they appoint you?
Yes. I haven't sworn in, but yes. Okay, sorry to waste your time.
I haven't, I haven't.
Jerry can still go to the meeting, will he?
Yes.
Just to, as a board member, you can't vote on it, I don't think.
I'm not sure.
Pardon?
Oh, just, uh, Trish was just asking who, who stepped down on advisory?
Bob Nelson?
I heard Bob was going to, he did? Good for you.
Good, okay, so.
I left my application.
So we'll just, you can continue to.
Thank you. And nice to see you.
Okay. There goes some of your competition, Shirley. Carol Walsh. How are you, Carol?
My name is Carol Walsh.
Quite familiar with the beach area and I would like to be on the Beach Committee and I'd like
So this is, okay. So there's two committees, there's the Coastal Advisory Commission?
Yeah, not that.
And then there's the Beach Study.
I think the Beach Study would be more appropriate at this time. I worked at Boston Medical for 29 years. I'm now retired and I have some time. I love Situate. I've always loved Situate. I came here when I was 12 years old from Boston with a friend and I said, "Oh, I love this town. When I get married, I'm gonna live in Situate," which I did too, so. I just think we have so many areas to protect our water and, you know, beach areas and, you know, it's, by the town being so popular now and that includes the harbor, so I think I could, you know, I have a good head about me. I'm dedicated. I won't miss any meetings. I'm also familiar with Florida. I go back and forth there, but I would never miss a meeting, so.
What was your background?
A registered nurse, Boston, yeah, Boston Medical for 29 years and I've worked in many different areas, no beaches, so.
Great. Any other questions?
Any other concern that you have in mind? You know, what prompted you to wanna be a member of the Beach Study, other than that you're a coastal resident?
Right, I'm a coastal resident with
Anything in mind that you would like to see happen at our beaches?
Oh, yeah, I'd like some seawalls repaired, you know, in a timely fashion and I think there's many areas in the beach area. I think it should be, we should have some handicapped access for folks, even if it means, you know, one of those wheelchairs with the big enormous, it's, I feel very sad, somebody parks on Foam Road, which is my daughter's house beside me, and they basically practically have to carry this sundown and I think, oh.
So we have one, so we need to do a better job.
Years ago, we had a, on Museum Beach there, which has really become so popular. There was not a seat there over the weekend. And, you know, I think the bar scouts did it one year and they had the ramp going down, so.
So Karen, we actually, last year, actually got one, but we only have one and it's only allocated towards Egypt Beach, which is why I say the Beach Study Committee, the Beach Committee, I call it.
Right.
It's a great opportunity to expand it because I happened to see one, I think everybody saw one during the winter at the MMA thing in January. And I think that's what, I'm glad to see that you've put the Beach Commission down because I think you'd be very helpful in various things. You know, we talked earlier about garbage and I know that sounds like, but you realize from all the people down to Museum Beach or Split Rock, you know, people don't pick up after themselves. There's, things of trying to make our beaches
And I see residents going right across with their daily garbage, so.
So I think, I think you'd be wonderful for that commission.
Thank you, thank you very much. Okay. Any other questions?
Thank you. Go for the questions, great, thank you for coming in.
Thank you, I appreciate it, thank you.
Nancy Fay?
Nancy Fay, 45 Egypt Beach Road, Situate. I'd like to do the Advisory Commission, the new one that you're forming. I am part of the Coastal Coalition, I wanted to put that out front. And I did have a few hesitations when I heard that you were forming this new committee and disbanding the Seawall Committee and Ms. Curran was nice enough to answer back my email to her. And I think I would just like to be part of the solution to what is going on here in town. There is just so much, the beach issues are so far-reaching, from seawalls to rise in seawater to securing grants, that I think it makes, after your presentation, I see what sense it makes to have a committee like this or a commission like this, that you are able to then work with other towns, work with other districts, like the study that came out with Marshfield, Duxbury in Situate with the water rise and the predictions. And I think I'd just like to be part of the solution.
Any questions?
The only question I have, Ms. Fay, is that I recognize when you start with the Coastal Coalition and in particular, some people start with, who are on, you weren't, but on the Seawall Committee, which is, was a good committee. Can you be open-minded and objective to other solutions?
Absolutely.
Because as you could see from the presentation we had about a month ago, there may be other solutions that will, shall we say, arrive at the same conclusion that various, you know, mechanisms can be used.
Absolutely.
Whether it's seawall or whether it's beach nourishment or whether it's, you know, you know, wads, they call them, wave attenuated devices, who knows? And that's what this Coastal Advisory Commission's kind of like, put out to look at, all various solutions without coming in with one angle and saying, "I'm only here for seawalls," because
No, 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 no. I'm not here, I'm not here for just seawalls.
I'm doing that too because anybody else who comes up, I'm asking the same thing because I wanna make sure they're open-minded, that's all.
Right, I think as a coastal person, though, I'm also, I just finished up working for Sailors for the Sea, which is an ocean conservancy group, and we did the Volvo Ocean Race and we were in the educational zone, which was right next to the University of Rhode Island and their graduate program in ocean studies. And there, what we work with, with Sailors for the Sea is carbon dioxide in the ocean and I do Surf Rider Foundation, which is beach access and then Boston Harbor Islands. I've been a stewardship there for 16 years and doing invasives and going around and seeing where the tides are causing different problems. So no, I am coming at it from, I wanna come at it from, I see the bigger picture and I don't think that it's healthy at this point to just come from one particular aspect such as the Seawall Committee or Coastal Coalition. I think that the town needs to have a bigger plan in place to be able to get grants, to be able to get funding, to be able to do it just a little bit more comprehensively because it's a long-term issue, not a short-term issue.
And again, that's, that's all I ask.
Yeah. No, and my background prior to coming back into town, I'm a lifelong resident here, but left for a while and my background before this was marketing and advertising and financial services, so.
Is that what your role is on these other commissions that you just?
No, I do volunteer work with them. I help do education, do pretty much anything they need. If they need some advertising, I will help them do that also. Boston Harbor Islands, it's a stewardship Saturdays. It's a strictly volunteer position, but if they ask me to do other things, I will do other things for them also. It's just a love of the ocean and a love of wanting to see a solution to the problem that our town and every other town is having.
Great.
Okay?
Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tim Kelly?
Keith Jansen? Keith Jansen, our home is at 148 Central Avenue in Humrock. Like one of the other candidates, I too am a summer resident, but a full-time taxpayer, as I say. We live in Humrock approximately three to four months a year and the rest of the time we live in Pembroke. My background, by day, I'm president and CEO of a medical device company. When I'm not doing my day job, I am a dedicated father and husband, but do a lot of volunteer activities, whether it be youth sports or most recently, I was co-chair for the American Hortists Association Hort Bowl in Boston. And five or six years ago, in Humrock specifically, there was a need for a rezoning of the business district, believe it or not, there was a business district in Humrock. And in true Humrokkian fashion, asking 10 Humrokkians their opinions, you're gonna get 11 answers. Nobody could come to consensus. So I raised my hand and said, "Listen, you really need an ad hoc committee," so I volunteered on the spot. So I was chair of the ad hoc committee, which we successfully brought to a town meeting in about a year and a half and it passed and it has opened things up a little bit in Humrock. So why am I interested in this? Situate and Humrock has been fantastic to our family and there's a need. Some of the other applicants and a lot of people have said, "Water is the gold of tomorrow." It truly is. We just need to keep it in the ocean and not on the land. I look at it as a huge opportunity, a huge challenge and something frankly, I'm looking forward to. From a family perspective, our second child is going away to college. The first one's already there. My wife and I are being empty nesters and I will have a little extra time.
Any questions? How long have you been in Humrock, did you say?
16 years.
16 years.
In the summer.
Great. And what's your address again?
148 Central.
So how far down?
Uh, wait, I can probably show it to you. It's right where Atlantic is.
Okay.
Where that river, where that arrow is pointing, that's it.
Good. Any other questions, great? We'll vote on it later and thank you for coming in.
Thank you, thank you.
Richard Hardy?
Evening, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, thanks. I'm Richard Hardy, 84th Central Avenue, Situate.
So tell us why you wanna be on this commission?
Which commission?
So you applied for Coastal Advisory Commission?
Yes, but that would be as a liaison from the Conservation Commission if I'm reappointed. Ah-ha.
Okay.
That's why I asked which one.
So if you're not reappointed to CONCOM, you'd like to be on this?
Sure, but the reason, yes, the answer is yes.
But you also wanna be the liaison for CONCOM?
That's right. Again, my term at CONCOM is up, so I've reapplied for conservation and frankly, the application for the Advisory Committee was before I even thought about the fact that my term was coming up, so.
So you've only served one term on CONCOM?
That's correct.
Gotcha.
Three years.
Great. Well, liaison for the committees, Tricia, help me, does the charter say that we appoint them or the committee appoints the liaison?
Well, this one's kinda confusing because we actually have a spot for a Conservation Commission representative.
Right.
You know, it's a full-time spot, it's not really a liaison position.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, not only, but for the
But that's, but are you applying for that as well? You're applying for that, right?
Yes. The idea was that when the spot was opened up, to have a liaison on this commission from Conservation.
Right.
I went in and saw Nancy and
So do we, we pick the person on CONCOM or does CONCOM?
So it's, it's not quite a liaison, it's an actual, they're gonna
Liaison, yes.
And this was done by design because so much of what this commission's going to do is gonna involve Conservation Commission.
Yes.
And short of that, just the expertise that we'll have at the meetings right off the bat to do that.
Yes.
So I, I, I think that it can go either way. I mean, I think the board can appoint a member of the Conservation Commission, but obviously, they wouldn't do that in a vacuum, just by picking one of the seven members unless somebody was interested.
I, I would say this, all of my colleagues on Conservation are aware of this. They didn't say, "Don't do it."
Right. So tonight, I think the only ones we're gonna do tonight possibly are the, probably not the liaison, it's not, probably, and we haven't discussed it, I didn't know if we were gonna, we probably won't do yours tonight if you're coming from, unless you don't get reappointed to CONCOM, then you could be one of the variable spots.
Right.
Okay. Any questions for Richard? Glad we cleared that up.
Thank you. All right. Thank you.
Is Louise here?
Yes.
How are you?
Good. My name's Louise Funde. I live on Stanton Lane and I'm applying for the Coastal Advisory Commission.
And why do you wanna do that?
I've lived here eight years and I've seen dramatic changes. I live right on the coastline and I've seen just drastic changes. So I've spent a lot of time trying to understand the issues and learn about the different options. Spent a lot of time talking to Patrick Gallivan and Nancy Durfee and I went to all the town-sponsored meetings. I met with Rebecca Haney and she actually did a site visit where I live and sort of talked about options. So I'm just very interested in understanding and learning about it. And my, my background in business, I led a couple of major projects at the Gillette Company, so I feel I have very, very good listening, troubleshooting, research skills. And I also am very interested in the public versus private issues, which I know are pretty specific here and I've met with DPW about some of those. So I, I feel like I can be very neutral and unbiased, but I like to understand all the issues and sort of help the committee figure out what's, what the options are.
Louise, where is Stanton Lane?
It's at the bottom of Man Hill Road, Man Hill Road Extension. There's five houses that are on pilings on a private way.
Right.
So we don't usually get much attention because we are on a private way, but that's the way it is.
I was saying, this past weekend, when you go down the bottom of Man Hill Road, there's no parking.
Right.
Is that part of your property as well?
No. Man Hill Road Extension is public, but then it takes a right and then that's private. So there's actually technically not supposed to be any parking on Man Hill Extension, although people do.
I did.
Yeah.
Were they red trucked?
Yeah, I don't know.
Laura, any questions?
Louise, what, what skill set do you think you would bring to the committee? So we're looking to make sure that this committee moves the entire initiative forward and really providing some of our departmental heads some really
Right.
Good, you know, leadership school skills, research skills, helping them collaborate some of their information, really put together an action plan. So type of skill sets do you think you'd be able to provide to the committee?
Well, I think because I've served on a number of important committees in my career at Gillette, I have very good neutral skills and negotiating skills and research skills and just, you know, you always had deadlines, you had to get things done. And I actually don't think it's that important that you're a coastal expert. I think it's more about what your business and other interpersonal skills, being, you know, able to listen, form opinions, have discernment and that type of thing and, you know, just be even-keeled about things. And I think, you know, that's, those skills are very important as well and that's, I believe I have all of those.
How long did you say you lived there?
Um, 2008.
Okay, so, yes?
Yeah.
Do they have you around?
Yes, I do. Not, not the first couple of years, but I have since. But actually typically, I have to leave the last few winters for four or five weeks because the conditions and the pipes freeze and we have all kinds of problems.
She's in an interesting house. When I was growing up on Egypt Beach, there were, those homes were there, like the same homes.
Right.
In front of those homes, they had steel sheet that was driven into the ground and as kids, we used to run, you know, in and out of the waves. But now that's all gone, it's a matter of
Yeah, the Blizzard of, Blizzard of 78 wiped out all those houses and all those new houses have been built, like, after that. Unfortunately, some of those vetements or whatever they are, the retaining wall at extra-low tide come up and they're very dangerous. There's a lot of stuff still there.
You can see some of the pilings sticking out.
Yeah, the pilings, but there's also some rusty metal stuff that sticks out, so. Not great.
Any questions?
Can I just ask one more?
Do they?
Our notes say that you're also interested in the Beach Study Commission as well, because again, there are a lot of folks applying for different spots here, so I just wanted to ask you if that's another committee that you're open to?
Um, I'm open to it, but I just think that my skills would be better in the coastal because I, I did grow up on the ocean as well as a child and I have a healthy respect for the ocean and I just, I really love the ocean and I see what's happening here in the last five, six years and I'm much more interested in that.
Thank you. Louise? Is Peggy here?
Hi. Peggy Dinger, 75 Rebecca Road.
Great. And you're also applying for the Coastal Advisory Commission?
Yep. I would also consider the Beach Commission if, if I didn't get the coastal.
Great. And just tell us why you are interested in this commission?
I live directly on the water, coastal, right on the seawall, on Rebecca Road. And like Louise, I've seen a lot of changes in the ocean and the effects that it's had on the seawalls and the beach areas. I think Situate is known for its beaches and I'm a Realtor and see people coming to the town for waterfront areas and recreation and I'd just like to have a say and, and be able to contribute towards going forward with any improvements to the beach areas for the town.
So the beach areas would be more of the Beach Study, whereas the coastal is more global?
Yeah, but it, it's also all the vetements, the seawalls, the dunes, any of that type of thing. I understand basically, I'm not a scientist, there's nothing in my background like that, but I've served on several boards. like that, but I've served on several boards. I'm, I'm right now currently on the Mass Association of Realtors Board of Directors and I've been on the Plymouth and South Shore Association of Realtors Board of Directors. I'm on the Coastal Coalition. I have been on the Library Foundation, the Situate Library Foundation. I served several years, so.
Peggy, you're part of my ignorance, are you a Realtor in Situate?
I, actually, I live in Situate and most of my business is out of Situate, but I was recruited to the Norwell office, so I'm in William Ravis, which has a Situate office, but I'm in the Norwell office.
Okay.
But I've lived in Situate twenty-nine years, so I'm rooted.
I was just gonna say, I know Peggy very well and I know that she cares greatly about the community and certainly the areas, and so I know that she's always mentioned to me her interest in the coastal advisory and so do a good job.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. However I can serve. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, is Stephen Trupp here?
Yes, yes, sir.
Oh, yeah. Very well, how are you doing today? So Stephen, you're applying for the Beach Study?
Yes, I am.
Just tell us where you live, what you want to do.
Property, it's forty Marshfield Avenue in Hummerock. So if you're in the right-of-way and you're looking for Main Street USA, I'm right there on the corner of the seawall and the right-of-way, the public access. Since nineteen seventy, started as a family rental on Old Mouth Road and, and it evolved to my wife and I purchasing this home in nineteen eighty-five. So I've seen a lot. I've seen what happened in Seventy-Eight, I saw what happened to the no-name storm. I witnessed some major changes over the last couple of years just along Hummerock Beach and it's an opportunity for me to serve and I'm looking forward to an opportunity to apply for that.
So is your house, when you walk towards the beach, one on the left?
Right.
On the right?
Arthur Brown is on the left if you're heading toward the ocean. My house is the gray, Cape Cod gray on the right-hand side of budding the seawall.
So is that a real?
We get roughly seven weeks' worth of income on the property, yes. For the most part, though, we're there for six to seven months on and off.
Six and-
I'm not a voter in the town of Situate. I am a resident of Windsor, Connecticut.
Okay.
So again, I would fall into that category, but we are a strong population there. These are cottages that exist along that beachfront. And again, I feel it's a populace that needs to be served here at some point.
And what about making meetings and stuff when you're not living?
Um, no problem. The problem with now Raymond James has an office in Hangham. I have clients all over New England, including on the South Shore. My core business was in Braintree, Massachusetts for twenty-five years before I sold it. So as my, my responsibilities, if you want, my, my experience in business, I've served many chairs, including chairman of a five-hundred-million dollar consortium, buying consortium. So I, I've been on good committees and bad committees and I know what, you know, how to, how to conduct myself in a committee.
And you know the beach study is more about studying the beaches and trying to improve them and try to figure out a-
Absolutely, I can say-
The way I'd say, like, look, and when you go to like Maine, New Hampshire, Vermont, and you have a mountain, you're saying, geez, what could we do with skiing or snow and boom, maximizing it for the benefit of the town?
It's a starter for me, and I have to say, you know, I've sat on my front porch and I've seen church services. I've sat on my front porch and watched yoga classes being given. I've also witnessed that we're pretty much a dog park for a large part of the year. But I've also seen the metal barrels that are our trash barrels on the beaches, target practice, and maybe we could do a better job with that so that we don't have to listen to the bells of Hummerock in late into the nights. And I've, again, lifelong lover of that beach community and certainly, as I've said in my, my document there, that my wife and I are empty nesters. We've officially cleared that hurdle and, and we are preparing to design and develop the property so we can live there year-round, which has been a, pretty much a lifelong dream for us.
Any questions? Great. Stephen?
Thank you very much. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, I know we skipped one person earlier. Is there anyone here who is here to be met and not been met? Okay, I think it was Aubrey Burke. All right. Well, that is that. So before we, we'll vote those later in the meeting. Now we'll move to the next item, which is update and discuss Heritage Days.
I think Aubrey Burke.
No, that is the girl getting married.
Greg Adamin, representing the chamber.
They have police and fire here too, Tony.
Oh, great. So just a quick overview, we had all these grandiose plans for Heritage Days.
Yes.
And as of two weeks ago, we found out that they kind of fell apart, and now we're here to pick up the pieces and see what we're gonna do. And you're gonna explain that to us.
Sure. Yeah, no, we absolutely had some grant ideas when we came before the board before. We thank you for approving them essentially to move forward at that point with the idea that we'd be back with our final tweaks to the event. We have eliminated a lot of those ideas. They are harder to implement, I think, than we originally proposed. Specifically, we're making three major changes. We've eliminated the food tent in the Taste for Situate event that we had proposed. We're withdrawing our application for liquor license associated with that tent, and we're removing our request for a second stage at the event. That being said, the layout is generally in conformance to the layout that you're used to see in with the twenty-fourteen Heritage Days event. We have made some modifications to it, though, that I've shown here on the plan. Modifications basically were the result of two things, a relocation of the primary music stage and better emergency access into the site. So the harbor here, this is Front Street, sorry, this is Front Street here, the Jack Conway Building, Cole Parkway out back, obviously the harbor going around. What we're proposing is we're proposing vendors along Front Street between Field Place and Otis, and then a separation, and then another set of vendors from Otis Place to Allen. Our previous submitted had eliminated these vendors in talking with the harbor merchants, and amongst our group, we have added those back in. This break specifically allows emergency vehicles to come down Otis Place and have a direct shot into the harbor. We'll notice that we've relocated the stage, this is the REVA building here, we've relocated the stage from Otis Place to the back parking lot behind CBS. This is the stage and seating area. Again, that's to allow two-way traffic through here in an emergency scenario. This would be blocked off with a barricade here and a barricade here, so it would really just be pedestrian traffic throughout the day, no vendors through that corridor. Traffic otherwise will remain unchanged. There'll be traffic coming around the backside of Cole Parkway, two-way traffic all the way around the back, around the Harbor Master Building, two-way traffic into Millmore Parking Lot in and out on the other side of Front Street. We've moved our food vendors to this location in the parking lot, right here. We've created a premium vendor section next to the music area. The premium vendor section, we had presented to you before, it allows us to sell overnight vendor places so that our vendors don't have to take down their tables and their tents at night. We would provide security in that location so that those vendors can leave their, their exhibits up. The amusements are to the backside here where they typically always are. This reduced footprint, you know, our previous submitted used all of Cole Parkway, eliminated all of the parking in Cole Parkway. This essentially is the same footprint as the Heritage Days of the past. We're running to the middle island of the Cole Parkway area, which is where we've run to past several years. We've also discussed with the chiefs about parking on Kent Street, and it sounds like they were amenable to parallel parking on the western side of Kent Street for a total of a hundred cars, starting St. Mary's and running toward the Rotary. Like previous years, we're gonna have MBTA busing from the MBTA lot down to this location as well. So you're right, we, we cut back on some of those larger ideas we originally had, but we have made some tweaks to it for this year. I should note, we still would like to move forward with the extended hours on the music. We had presented before running music on Saturday night, I believe until ten fifteen at night, and on Sunday, running until six PM with the music.
Saturday, ten fifteen, Sunday to six?
Correct.
Great. As far as the parking goes at the MBTA, is that clarified yet as far as where it is running on the weekends? Any clarification with that?
We're working on it, because I believe we have somebody in here tonight to talk about transfer of town land. Mr. Conroy, this year, this evening, I thought I saw that on the agenda. He's purchasing half of the upper parking lot.
Okay.
And I'm not sure when he passes and owns that. And then I will be in touch with Cantwell to see how, if we can get that upper parking lot as we have him passed. I just don't need to have all the ticketing people for four bucks for him.
So the MBTA retained quite a bit of that parking lot that Mr. Conroy's development, even if his past papers won't impact.
Okay.
And we also have the sloop that will be running as well.
On weekends?
Yes.
Excellent. That'll be perfect.
It's not gonna be a big-
It's a little bus.
It's a little house, still, still a little house, still something new.
Generalization brings bigger buses.
My biggest concern in all of this, people, the last time we were in, was public safety and access. And I'm really pleased that Otis, by the way, here is closed to vehicular traffic, open to pedestrians. It's all about safety, and that was my biggest concern in all of this. And I think that we have resolved those issues. I'm gonna talk to Karen Cafferty about the electronic sign, if that's available for us for that weekend. If not, we have Liddell and I've talked to Sergeant DeMartin, and we'll come up with seventy-five stanchions, and we'll make it happen.
Did you say that you might be able to park cars on Kent Street on one side?
Yes.
We asked about that in our meeting show.
That could be done every, every week. You know, people wanting to do tickets and church. You guys work that out around the church hours, the Sunday, what times your-
What time do you start on Sunday?
What time do you typically start?
Nine.
Yeah.
They start at nine.
Music doesn't start on Sunday?
So ten o'clock.
The first, yeah. Did you have something to say?
I think the traffic on Kent Street, that was done during St. Patrick's Day. That works out very well. The Chamber folks here have worked very hard. Last year, they made a lot of changes at a lot of the barricades, the columns, worked out very well. They've made changes this year to make it a very safe event. Like I said, they've worked very hard. The police department is navigating issues. I think it'll be a great event, should be very safe.
Don't get me wrong, I, I think that's great. If you can park one side of Kent Street, you know, you've provided buses in the past, no matter what you do, people just won't do it. So I, I think it's a win-win for the police to run.
I think we have to consider the church hours and the music and the parking, especially at St. Mary's parking lot, where it's gonna get filled up right away because there's not much parking in Cole Parkway during the service hours. I can't imagine St. Mary's being very happy with that.
One thing I would say on that is, because I was thinking about it when you mentioned it, is you should probably talk to St. Mary's. In the past, they usually put somebody or few people out in the parking lot to, to make sure that the churchgoers are able to get in. Wondering to considers maybe ask them if they can maybe stack cars, you know, instead of having just, they could maybe, they have aisles, maybe they can have cars parked behind. Technically, I think there is no parking, I thought, on Kent Street, or maybe on Sundays. I mean, so technically, they're not supposed to park there and they do. But I think if you were to talk to St. Mary's and say, you know, if, on the chance it's a one-time event that happens, can you maybe have, if there's gonna be parking for the benefit of the town for Heritage Days, Chamber Commerce on Saturday and Sunday morning, could they maybe consider stacking, I call it stacking, but basically parking cars, block everybody in. And they have two parking lots, they can do it in, so they can manage that. Might be beneficial.
And one question I had, you know, for the, when, during a church service, they typically park on both sides of Kent Street.
Right.
And we're, we're only got permission to park on one side.
I don't think it'll really be an impact, and if there is, they can, like I said, they, they have two parking lots, they can manage it, they should be able to manage it. For just the short time that they need it, from ten in the morning until the last mass, which is at eleven, which means by twelve. And probably, there may be people parking at Kent Street, there may not be, who knows? It may not be a, a big, I think Saturday would be more of the challenging, because I think a lot of people try to go Saturday as opposed to Sunday. Just a thought.
So you haven't, you haven't spoken to St. Mary's yet?
Not, not directly, but we certainly can reach out to them. And I mean, if we have to reserve, if they ask us to reserve, you know, the first fifty spaces or something, I'm sure we can do that because we'll have the overflow of the MBTA parking lot. As, as John said, you know, it's only really until, till noon time at the latest, so.
Well, I wonder if you'd be willing to put somebody in there to monitor their lot, because that's where all your patrons are gonna wanna park in St. Mary's parking lot. Especially, has the music always started at ten on Sunday?
We have, we have it in the past year.
How was it started at ten?
We shut down Front Street at six in the morning, both Saturday and Sunday. And the crafters all get set up and they figure out, they generally park wherever there's a parking space, out beyond what we're doing. If you're not there by eight o'clock in the morning, you're not gonna find a parking space regardless of what you do or where you're going. We've never had an issue to date with St. Mary's and that parking lot because they do put up soft horses and they say, "No parking." And it is my understanding, they don't even have weddings on that weekend. So it has never been, as far as I know in the years that I've worked Heritage Days, an issue with St. Mary's.
I think they use it for the pancake breakfast on Saturday morning, I think, and so it's, they're moving people. I just only say, because I think what they do is they have representatives out there, put them up, and it's just only trying to be, again.
Good neighbors, we're-
We start to reach out to them.
I mean, it was one year, one senior charged five bucks a head to parking this parking lot, so.
Well, you could, I've seen somebody say they're gonna charge a hundred dollars to park in their parking lot. Nobody's done it either, so I mean, you know. The only difference I see this year, I mean, St. Mary's has always been the same, like everybody's saying. The only difference, obviously, is that we, you know, we have permission to park on one side of the road, as we're saying. So what's gonna be happening is, I think, there'll be enforcement and usually St. Mary's, they're parking on both sides of the road, so some of those people are gonna get tickets.
I think you're allowed to. I believe there's a bylaw, something that allows you during church hours to park on those sides of the street. I think we, we got the question a couple of years ago.
I think what'll happen is, I would presume the police will say, "It's twelve o'clock, mass is over, she's parked on this side, tickets as a twelve on, so people move your cars." I didn't know about a bylaw, huh? Good question. This plan's fine. The last plan was fine in my mind. I had no issues with it either. Only question I had is, I see that you moved the, the stage. Was there a reason why it wasn't placed further back? In other words, instead of facing towards the ocean, having it, having it towards the ocean but facing towards the, towards the buildings? Is that a, you know, I know that, just as a concept, if it was electrical, I was gonna say, you know, tapping into town or something, if that was the need, I wasn't too sure. Would the stage as a backdrop with the ocean, that's all.
Yeah, no, I'm not sure why we faced it out toward the ocean as opposed to the buildings. Might have something to do with acoustics facing it toward the building, but I-
I tell, I answer yes.
I, I'm not, I'm not certain.
I think we put it there because we thought it was better for-
Congratulations.
And it also has to do with the musicians and what have you, access, because that street will be kept open and the crafters will not start until the bay after ban of the stage, so that Jerry will have access to the back, which he will need.
Which almost makes sense to do it the way John said, right? Because no one's gonna be on the-
Backside.
People walking where you want access, right?
Before we had it, it made sense because you linked from Front Street to Cole Parkway. Now with the opening of Otis Place Extension or Otis Place, my reason for saying turning around is, because now you're facing it all, and if you needed access to the back, because you're not having that as an open road looping, it's only as, just in the event of, so you have all that potential back space towards the gazebo to utilize if need be. That was, that was my only reason for saying it, that was maybe because you're facing away, the people are gonna be kind of pushed away, whereas you're gonna contain them closer to your vendors and everything. But it's up to you, whatever you guys, that's what you want.
I can answer those questions.
Answer those questions. At this point, I mean, we have, we have new plans in place. We're getting an electrical drop by National Grid to provide the electricity. We have a certain predefined place now. The electrician is going to erect a mast there, so we're working, expecting to use that.
You got less than a month, I got it, I'm just only asking, that's it.
And then we'll be just, place there versus re, is the crowd is probably going to disperse more left and right versus back. So there'll be plenty of room up there, that traffic lane by the gazebo will be open, I don't think that's going to be blocked. Acoustically, it would be better to be at the water and facing in because there's always a breeze coming in. It's actually fighting the sound, but for the time being, we're planning to take care of all the issues at that spot. I also wanted to mention that we have been granted officially music till 8:00 on Sunday in the event we have a problem. And let's just make sure that that's clear because we could have issues. Intention's on, and the music is 6:00 on Sunday. And also, I think that we checked that our application, previous approval for Saturday night was till 10:30, but we are expecting to end the show at 10:15, so we have at least a little leeway there if there's a little problem. So just make sure that that's...
Is that what we approved, or?
Yeah, I don't know, I, we had received the application today.
Last year we did, we extended it because I know that in the past, there, there were problems with performances coming late because of scheduling and the problem was it ended at 6:00 and we had it at 6:00. And again, we're trying to hear to cooperate and the long and short of it is, I would think it was 7:00 and I think last year we did 8:00 and I'm not denying it, so I think it makes sense. They're not looking to perform right up 8:00. Just gives you that bump.
Sunday night especially, we want it to be done at 6:00 because we're exhausted. We don't want it going.
I got it.
Can I ask, listen, Fire, do you guys have any feedback on this or any, did you all approve this?
Yes, we met with them. I think this is the best time we've had so far as far as access and for public safety down at Otis Place. It also went from Bollia on the perimeter, so I'm very satisfied with it for the plot plan, the site plan.
Just, with the vendors on Otis to Allen, are they doubled? I know in the past, we always said do a single, but I'm not...
It all depends on how many people we have. That, right now, I think it's about 50 people that would be spread out between Allen and Otis, so that there will be ample room.
And the reason I say this is because now with the opening of Otis, you have full access to the condominiums now on all sides for the most part. It looks like chief.
We have much better access.
Yeah, so, that was the reason why I was asking.
And also too, the Front Street and Cole Parkway itself will be open to through traffic, but we hope between 6:00 and 7:00 each night. So that, you know, those people know that they have to go.
So the music will be playing till 10:00, but the vendors are there on Front Street.
And we have talked about that too. There is a little, there's a gap between the last, the next to the last performer and the 9:00 show. And what we're going to do, have the buses end at 8:30, there will be ample parking in the harbor area so people can relocate their vehicles and walk.
Did you have anything to add?
They also changed the bus drop-off.
Yes.
And pick up area that's going to be on the part of Front Street is closed, that'd be much safer, very congested down memory is. So that's a good change. And I think with the time, with the music playing later, probably just the issues that we had last year, complaints were from residents of the harbor. So it would want to be a great idea to reach out to the condo associations or let them know the music's going.
Where's the drop-off now?
The new drop-off is right in front of the Jack Conway Rockland Trust. It's the location here, they can circle up Field Place around the bank and out. Do a turnaround there and head back out.
Makes sense.
Anything, questions really?
Just, just one observation, I just want to say thanks to the Chamber, you know, and Jerry, I know, and also you. The one thing I will say is, you know, I've looked at social media and I just have to tell you, you know, you folks work really hard to run on something that's going to be beneficial for the town. And it's been over 40 years and I commend you all for doing it. And, you know, I wish you really well and luck on this.
I have two questions. Will parts of Cole Parkway need to be shut down for the stage to be constructed?
Yes, we talked with Officer Keel Martin the other day about the access times. That first row of parking with the stage and the surrounding area is going to be, is, we requested Wednesday afternoon at noon.
Just for the parking spots?
Yes, so we have the open footprint. We still have concern about people having parked there and gone away, whether they're residents on vacation or people on fishing trips. When we have a new area that we're going to be setting up in, it's a new footprint, we're going to have to build additional barriers, security barriers, and deal with some unexpected situations, so we need time. And it's going to be a little more difficult this year because there's another 150 feet out back, which is 300 feet round trip. Typically, the last five years, I've been able to run over there Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday afternoons and oversee things and make directions. And when I have to close my store down, that's not going to be able to happen this year without extra 300 feet a trip. So we're going to need more time in the evenings to take care of all the nuisance. Again, we've got new territory there to deal with. But we're just talking about parking. And we're not talking about any lanes of traffic, which was some of the reasons for concern in the past about the timeframe. So Officer DeMartin did seem to have any problem with that.
So last year, I believe, Jerry, it was around 6:00 on a Wednesday, you're allowed to set up. But you're saying because of the change of the venue, you need a little extra time. So on noon on Wednesday to the first performance on Saturday, that area will be sort of under, will be utilized.
We'll get up areas over there and do the best we can to isolate it as soon as possible. If we have cars in there, we'll leave them some access to leave and hopefully eventually it will be emptied out. But if we may end up still having a problem, we do have some concern about that. So we'll deal with that if it happens.
And the other question I had is typically, where are the banks of porta-potties located for Heritage Days? So what's going to happen with this new design? With the way the audience is seated, is everybody there is going to go into the harbor master's office to use those restrooms? So we have to talk about making them only for employees or whatever, and I see that as a real problem. On a normal Heritage Days, they get used widely, but now we're dealt direct, you know, the new arrangement is going to have a direct access there. So I don't know if you can move them a little closer or that's handy, or maybe double up. But since you're moving the bulk of the population to the back end of Coleway from Front Street now, I just see that, that they're going to have an impact. So just, just something to be aware of.
Now, just from my eye, and maybe it's just a drawing, it looks like it's using more of the parking lot than it typically does. Is that, is that just an optical thing? Those boxes seem to be...
The vendors, the food vendors usually go up the side next to Otis. Almost to the end. In the middle, we usually take up the first 20 parking spaces with vendors that sort of come in and use that area as they back in their vehicles to do that. So maybe in the, the two boxes in the middle, they're using those parking spaces up to the, that would be additional parking space that we're taking away. But just the two rectangles in the middle.
Probably the square too, right?
Well, the square is...
There's an island here on either side.
That's always, that's always been that.
That's always been that one. And that first rectangle next to the band is going to be secure at night, you're going to have a security guard watching that?
Yes.
And the one next to it is food?
Correct.
So we'll ban, secure area, food, carnivals.
There's enough room.
And we'll need signage at the library that it's for parking for library patrons only because people, I know, that's why I always parked. So we're just, because the library's open 9:00 to 5:00 on Fridays.
On Friday, but not...
I mean, on Saturdays, I'm sorry.
Sunday.
9:00 to 9:00 Friday, 9:00 to 5:00, Sunday we're closed.
I just thought of something. We borrow the folding chairs, DTW delivers them. I believe that they have been stored at the library in the past, that's where they were picked up. Anybody know if they're still there, is that building going to be accessible? Old library?
That's an excellent question because the old library is no longer operable.
Kevin, do you know where those are?
I have to consult with Ken Kelly to find out exactly where they are. They all moved out or they're in storage.
And there's, there's one other mystery. Once upon a time, there were about 240 chairs. And the amount of chairs that have been stored at the library has gotten down to about half of that. The rumor is that somewhere in this town, there's another 120 chairs stored somewhere that nobody knows.
Jerry, I'm hiring you as a slop to find out. Find the chairs, I'll tell you right now.
Somewhere along the line, you might find the form Meyer.
I have one question for Jerry, if I could. So Jerry, during Wednesday at noon on, you're confining the operation to basically the area that the stage is going to be the final spot, right?
Right, we're going to start bringing over all of our materials, which will be barriers, t-shirt, rock, we'll build the sound booth. And start to get that whole thing set up and secured. We're anticipating renting a stage this year too. That's, that's actually news, so we're going to hopefully have a delivered stage either Thursday or Friday afternoon. We'll necessitate that there are absolutely no cars in that area. After the stage is in place, then we finish up. Securing the entire area, but that's our, that's our timeframe.
So you're going to build your barriers, make sure you measure twice before you build the barriers.
We do, we measure three times.
Who's playing?
We'll tell you.
I just walked by my store tonight, she wants to play. Should I let her?
Yeah.
Well, we're still working on finishing out the schedule, but I have some of the usual New England favorite bands like The Fools are back. James Montgomery with, backing the girl from the band Boston. Tony Lynn Washington, Girls Guns and Glory, local Situate-based band making good around the world, will be back. We have Janis Joplin's original band, Big Brother and the Holy Company coming back. They were here maybe seven years ago. All the acts we've had over all the years, it's amazing how many comments I've had about that band, still. So that should be fun. Saturday evening, we're going to start about 7:00, 7:30 with the Fat City Band, they haven't played for a number of years. And then we have the 70's disco dance band from Massachusetts, Tavara's. So we're going to have Saturday Night Fever in the harbor, that's the theme. They did have one of their songs on the Saturday Night Fever album, one of the Bee Gees. That should be fun, I think that was a, that'll be a real good fit to the evening crowd, families to come down after dinner and it should just be upbeat and fun. Sunday, we have Tony Lynn Washington and James Montgomery, but the last couple of slots, we still have to fill, but I have a lot of negotiations underway to finish that up, so that's where we stand.
Great. All right, well, good job. I know it's been a lot of work over the last couple of weeks, planning, replanning and all that sort of stuff, so we appreciate all the energy.
Can I have one more question specifically for Sean? Don't get nervous. Last year, Sean was immensely helpful to us in that he loaned manpower in his truck to help us move the benches from the Marshfield Fair. We're all crossing our fingers and hoping that you will help us out again this year.
How can I say that loud?
Same ground you requested last year. Excellent.
Just gets the things in there later and then moves them up quicker.
I also just want to say thank you. This is a great pocket, Situate in your pocket, it's given out by the Chamber of Commerce of our businesses in Situate Harbor and Green Bush and North Situate. And, you know, they're all over, I assume, downtown and North Situate. And do we have some here beside, at Town Hall for people?
I can make sure you get some, I think we had 50,000 of those made. Last year, we had 25,000 and they were gone. And so there's, there's a huge demand for those, they're, they're all over the place.
This is great.
We'll make sure you get some.
Just want to say thank you, it's a great thing.
Kevin, did you have something?
I was just going to say, if Sean happens to be over at the Marshfield Fairgrounds picking some stuff up, there's recycle bins over there that we have access to through Social Recycling Coalition. If by chance they wanted to take advantage of some of the recycling with Heritage Days and set up some recycling containers. You know, you guys, you guys have access to those to save maybe on some of your trash. You could get rid of the recycling at the transfer station.
Have you picked up a roller trailer?
They're just the, I believe they're the Bluetooth setup that people could use for recycling. It could be something that we talked about, we'll discuss it with everyone.
Excellent, good. Any other questions? Do we need to vote?
No.
Good luck, we'll all see you there.
Thank you.
Now, the next item is discussion zone on the sale of town-owned land in Green Bush.
Oh, I got the best one, these are my favorite. Do you want one of these?
Sure.
My favorite. All right, move to Jerry. Any second on that, no? Just checking. How are you? Good, how are you? There's the Conroy's right behind me. He's outside, you can see the air. Didn't realize your recognition is here. Shit. You guys all the same.
But if you can just give us your names and addresses.
Go to New York Street in Canton. Joe Lynch from Foxborough, Mass.
Who's that?
So. You guys are a long way from home.
Yes. Are you, are you an engineer?
I know, I work for Conroy.
It's current development. Okay, so we're going to talk about the property in Green Bush. You just bought the MBTA parking lot, is that correct?
In the process.
In the process of... Closing on July 30th.
Right.
Where's the... So, what were you just talking about that parking? Using the parking lot, box?
Yeah, it's still, that has nothing to do with it.
Well, can we show you this, it might be helpful? This is the frame of the parking lot on Difway.
Yeah, Ty, you can get that one there. Here's our next one here, here's our next one.
It's the total finding that the T has now, and it includes Conroy and the water park that we have. And the T on top, in the town of Situate. We took the hours paid, the T thought they owned this, thought they were talking.
Yes, if you don't mind sitting down, go here, you better. So we're talking about, as we look at this map, the piece of property, difference property to the right, it says kind of Situate, but no point here?
That's correct. So we backed the T and they said, no, we own it. So we did the purchase and sales and then we had a surveyor. And he said, no, the town of Situate owns it. The interesting thing is that the T has an easement plan on record, that shows all his parking. So I went back to Mark Boer, I said, what's going on? He said, well, we have, let us look at it, we don't own it. So he said, if you get it, well, you know, do away with the easements, as long as you, you know, fix it and, you know, take care of the parking. Get rid of this. Okay. So it's, we have about two and a half acres, the T has what left, Joe?
Uh, one, almost, almost two acres.
And this piece is...
About a half acre.
Half acre. And then the town to the... And then the town to the right has their, what have they, Joe?
The transfer station.
It's about a 10-foot drop from the parcel down to that. And behind us is the concrete plant.
Yeah, the first. Situate concrete.
Situate concrete. They have a huge concrete wall there, so it's really isolated, you know. It's of use to nobody except us. You can, you know, put it with what we're going to buy from the T. So that's why we're requesting that, you know, we have a chance to purchase it.
So you're asking that down, go through the process of putting this out for bid for purchase? And then you would be, you know, one of the number of people that could bid to buy it?
Yes, that's correct.
And is this, Sean, you know this area, but I mean, this is the back of, is this where like the take it or leave it is and the?
No. The first part is the first part, you see.
Do you want to take it or leave it?
Do you want to take it or leave it there?
Yeah.
Okay, so this is the back, it goes like this.
At one time, this was a residence house. Ralph Smith lived here. This was his house. There's been a lot of issues with these boundaries. Just growing up in the town. It may be probably elsewhere than that. My question is, so when the MBTA put this out for the RFP? Did they, they told you, you thought that this was part of it?
Yes. It's on their plan that has a plan from the T that says they own this. It was never recorded, you know. I think what happened, they went through the process. It happens all the time with the T. They intended to buy it or take it, but they didn't. Too late.
So what are you going to do with the extra? So you're going to be adding a fifth, 20% of your land there. How is that going to incorporate, be incorporating your development?
Well, we'll use that as space we need and we can put additional, how many? 11 additional units if we have that. And we've got more parking.
And more parking.
More parking.
And this is commercial on the first floor on all, or is that just on one of the units?
Just on the front. We have commercial on the front on Old Driftway.
Yep.
Which is what this only requires. And the rest will be apartments.
Just apartment buildings?
Yeah.
Or?
Yeah.
How many units in total? Sixteen?
What we're working on right now is 54 units on two and a half acres with about 7,000 square feet of retail on the first floor of a front building that fronts along Old Driftway. So there would be two buildings. The front building, we have first floor retail, second and third floor apartments. The rear building will have three levels of apartments. And that meets the village business overlay requirements.
Now, that's on the present 2.5.
Yes.
Adding the additional 29,000 square feet, how many more does that lend?
There's a provision of the village business overlay. What's allowed by rate under the current zone on our parcel is 43 units. But there's a bonus provision that we have to work out with the town.
What you haven't done yet?
The buy right number of units for the half-acre parcel of the town of Situate parcel would be 11. And if it were to be proposed as a bonus, once again, that would be about 15. Maximum.
Now, are you looking to, with the town's parcel, where the widest point between the end-of-year lot and the town transfer station, are you looking to build in that area? Or the, shall we say, the dog that goes into the MBTA? Is that kind of, are you envisioning building in that area or is that more for off-street parking, do you think?
We don't have a building, do we?
Well, there's, what would happen is we'd have a little more building on ours.
Yeah.
But we have accessways and we have parking utilizing it. So we redesign to have more buildings than ours, but it becomes one project, like one.
Well, the reason why I'm asking is because obviously the town has the transfer station. Who knows what the transfer station is going to be doing in the future in 50 years? But there may be a need for some form of access or easement, if you will, from the town parcel. Instead of having to go down the Driftway, maybe to cut across Old Driftway. I don't know. I'm just thinking of like things. But obviously that would potentially impede if they were to run easement potentially along the property boundary between MBTA and your Conroy. Would that impact into your building as you're proposing today?
Well, the problem is, there's like a 10-foot drop where the fence is.
Yep.
So there's no way you can go down there.
No, I know. I know. Who knows what's going to be the way that, you know, 100 years ago, they ended up doing the gravel pit. And then it's turned into a beautiful golf course. Nobody would have envisioned that probably back in 1930 when they tore it to the homestead. I'm just, I'm just looking for the benefit of the town. What's the town benefit aside from the fact we put this up for sale, we'll end up selling it for market rate? And you're the only one, aside from the town, that may be a concrete that could utilize it. But frankly, you probably could utilize it the most for development, which I get. And I'm just trying to figure out what the town will get in return, aside from the fair market value, what it's assessed for.
Well, there'll be additional taxes, you know, on the apartments.
The parking facility was all sort of graded out, whatever the previous grade was, to try to get a level rating for parking. So in some areas, we've got seven, eight feet of fill. I don't have the pre-grades, but yeah, it's clear that there has been some filling in this area.
See, I'm only asking because I'm looking at it from the perspective that, to me, I think the only two lots that get any benefit out of this obviously is the town or you folks ultimately looking at it. Yeah, but they're not going to really, unless, unless Situate Concrete buys the transfer station, they're not going to buy a sliver like a knife to try to develop into. So the only ones who are going to get it is either Conroy or the town of Situate if the town decides to do anything. But no, they're not doing anything with it. Frankly, it's kind of strange to find out that the MBTA's been utilizing it for the purposes of parking and taking tolls and, you know. It's embarrassing, but here's what it is.
What you may not know, it seems as though the MBTA was building on parcels and they didn't own them as well. I mean, the front parcel here below Conroy line is, I believe it's McGinnis Parcel.
Yeah.
They parked and built the whole parking facility on their land and didn't know till, you know, much later on. So I think it was sort of loosey-goosey back in 2002.
You know what? It brings me back. I do remember there was, we did, we were, I was aware of that because I remember them saying that we did a swap. That's what I recall, I thought, for something, was it with North Situate? Was it both and maybe that was it?
But I think even Tedeschi's property, they had parking spots on it.
Right. Yeah, that section of parking right here, just below, will be isolated. I mean, once we develop our piece, that'll be isolated. And that was sort of the same thinking when we're looking at this town of Situate parcel. When we put our property lines up there, there'll be really no access, at least from this standpoint, to these improvements.
So let me ask you this. In other words, you've done your title examination, your title examiner's come back and said, yes, this indeed is the town of Situate. It's not owned by MBTA.
That's correct. But they do have a plan on record, the T does.
The T on record saying that they actually own that?
They have, no, they can use it.
That they can use it in easement?
Easement plan.
All right, so.
What that means?
That might have gone along with the swap that we were talking about back in 2000 and?
No.
No?
No, it was more up front.
It was the front, it wasn't the side?
The swap was North Situate. There was a parcel that the town had taken out for many years. The town rented it to Freddie Litchfield to store equipment, as well as the town rented land from Situate Pipe to store stuff out back. Maybe that's why there's the confusion. This was the parcel before the MBTA came back in. Freddie Litchfield had those buildings and behind the buildings, he leased, blew in from the town. That's all from the old special? Way before your time. Have you never heard about it? Maybe that's how it happens.
So we're not voting tonight, but what you're asking us to do is, and this would have to go before Town Meeting, right?
It has to be bid.
Right, it has to be bid.
And it would go to the, right, there'd be a minimum and that we would need an easement for the back end of the transfer station. There's a concrete wall there, as Mr. Cafferty tells me.
It's a block wall, just so if we ever had to replace it, we'd need access in there.
This fellow right here.
Okay.
So you'd be asking us to prepare a bid to sell land, which is not easily done? And then, but hopefully, I mean, I assume you'd want to do it before the special Town Meeting in October.
I guess John's point is kind of good. We'd have to put a lot of work and energy into getting this land prepared. So you could probably buy, you're probably the only real buyer to buy us that market value. And John's saying, well, what's in it for us? So what's in it for us?
Well, taxes. How much would taxes be in each unit roughly?
I would say annually 2,500.
2,500 times 11 or 15?
Yeah. Yeah, that'll be it. The T will do away with the easement, even though it's not perfect.
Right.
And then we'll get rid of these parking spots and grade it where we have to do. And of course, as a fair market value. Whatever it is.
I appreciate what you're trying to do. And obviously, there's probably an affordable component for what you're building. And it meets the requirements of the overlay district that you're talking about. And certainly will hopefully add more, not just residences, but business to Greenbush. I just, I'm not convinced yet. For, aside from selling land to you to help your project, what's the benefit? And I realize the taxes, I get it. But whether or not that's a great benefit for the town, because I could see us in the future saying, well, that portion could be actually tacked on to where the transfer station is and we'd lend that lot more valuable in the future. Now granted, we'd have to find another location for the transfer station. But at this point, I have to look at this, I don't know about the rest of my members, but I'd look at the rest of it to see what else could be done for the benefit of the town. I can't necessarily come up here and say, sure, we'll sell it to you. It's our duty to protect the town's interests. And so that's why I'm saying to you, I need to figure out, if it were, what could be a future benefit for the town without selling property to find out after the fact? Gee, we should have done that.
We still have to take care of the T. The T is using that now.
Well, that's going to be my next question after the meeting. I agree with you. I agree with you.
They have a plan on record that says they have it, so.
So the reason it came up to us is we were thinking about, okay, where's our landscaping going? What are we doing? Have to start grading. So in this back corner, we're actually having to take the grade down a little bit. So there's going to be jungle land out there. It's got paving on it and it's probably not going to have any more lighting on it. And it's just going to get overgrown. And we're like, well, this could make sense to add it here. That's, that was the impetus of the whole conversation.
Well, also, you get to expand your project.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, it's absolutely.
Which we're not against, Steve. Like John said, there's an affordable component to it. There's tax dollar component to it. You know, what we don't want to get caught is selling a valuable piece of property for, for tens of thousands of dollars and find out later it was worth hundreds of thousands of dollars.
I have to, I have to say something since I've been on the board. You know, I don't think the town makes out real well by selling property. You know, we sold this property on a corner and good luck to the person that bought it. So we took by any joint, some houses on 3X. And we were told we're going to sell those for thousands of dollars. Guess what? We didn't. You guys are going to have a pretty tough sell, I think, to convince the town to be selling this property. I mean, just so, I'm sure the residents are just so amused with the way it is.
I guess that's what we're saying. The town's got a feel. You got to say, well, we need sidewalks or whatever else. Some type of mitigation goes along with it that makes it. I mean, I think we're putting the cart on the horse a little bit because you'd have to win the bid first and then, you know, then go from there.
But you could have a minimum bid. You know, we can say it has to be at least X.
Right. Okay.
So what's your timeframe? Just, I obviously would like to have it done by tomorrow or something, but I'm like, do you realize that this isn't going to happen? Even if it were to the fall or special, which probably won't happen until October, the earliest. So, you know, we're going to have to look at it. I'm not sure how that slows your progress for what you're trying to accomplish with the purchase and sale.
Well, if you did sell it, we had, we could wait for October. At least we know, you know, from a design standpoint, what we have. We could wait till October.
Okay.
I mean, that's as early as it could be, period. That's the fastest maybe. So that's also putting resources of town to work over the next couple of months to get it all together.
Well, starting next week. I mean, there has to be a lead time for the bid. You know, you have to have three weeks for that respondents. It has to be advertised maybe in the central register. That's two weeks. They only publish twice a month and there's two weeks in advance just to get the notice in. So we have to figure out a timetable. And Town Meeting's earlier this year.
So if you can find the next meeting, you could tell us when we have to vote that? If they even have to be at the next meeting? But somehow if you could work backwards on the calendar and say, Town Meeting, boom, 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 and say, this has to be voted by August 1st.
Yeah, I guess if, what we're hearing is that the board's not opposed to going out to bid. And if that's your consensus, then we'll work on a timetable and a draft RFP. But selling land is not an easy RFP. Because of all the things I just said, the central register and then the bid opening and then, and then getting it. I mean, it's your warrant, so that's not so bad in terms of getting in the queue for October. But we'll just have to look at the timetable. It's the central register and stuff like that and giving bidders enough time to respond. There has to be a site visit. We have to look at the deed and the assessors' records, come up with a value, decide if you want to assign a minimum value to it. I mean, I hate to say we can have that all for your next meeting. We can endeavor to do it. Yeah.
You guys have got inside whether you even want to do it by August 1st because otherwise we can't because there's not enough time.
Quick question. What's the, on the eastern side or the right side, there's the hash marks, which is the proposed property line. Then there actually is like a line with little circles. Is that the fence or is that?
Fence, it's an existing fence. And then there's landscaping between the fence and the paved surface.
Yeah.
Sean, do you have a question? Let me just, this is going to be a question. Well, we're looking at the school, the Maritime School, you know, how much time and energy could it take?
Well, it's not the staff. It's me as the chief procurement officer and Nancy, who has gone to procurement school. We have to check too to see if we have to hire someone to do an appraisal. I know you have to do it when you are buying land. We had to get two appraisals for Pier 44 before we bought it. We're just trying to remember. I don't think we do, but Nancy thinks we might. So if that's it, we're dependent on outside sources, not us. I mean, we could put together a boilerplate RFP tomorrow, but that's the stuff we have to check. So we'll have. Yeah, a survey if the title's not clear. So that's the stuff we'll have better answers to. And we can definitely, I think, have a report back to the board in two weeks, not to hold up Mr. Conroy. It's just, you know, we'll do our part as we usually do. It's just outside forces we might be dependent upon.
I could say this. Before everybody in the town goes through it, I'd rather in two weeks come back. Because I have to tell you right now, I'm not, Sean, I'm not in favor of this right now. I'm not sure I'm going to be in two weeks, but I think I'd rather give you that in two weeks than having you wait until October to try to go through something. At least you'd know right away whether it's a yea or nay instead of wasting your time. But I can tell you that right now, if a vote came right now, I'd say, no, we can't do it. But I know in two weeks, I'll probably look at some issues and see if it makes any sense from the town. And if it changes my vote right now, then I'd be happy to do it. But other than that, I think you'd probably want to know that.
Sure. That's what I hear.
That's what I would say.
And I think just like we do with the land swap over there, you know, it depends how sweet you can make the deal that makes us figure out. A lot of it, you know, they gave us 17 acres of land and we can build recreational stuff or whatever. I think those are the types of things that we have to maybe come back to you and say, there are some things that we'd like to do in that area. And then it helps both of you, right? Your residents get a benefit and our residents. Any other questions? Great. So next meeting, we'll talk about some of the information and we'll get back to you as well.
Good. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. The next item is discussion of the year-end transfers. Nancy, do you have the transfers?
Walking out of my shoes.
Good evening. Two sessions ago, we had some line item transfers and budgetary transfers for the end of the year, and this is the end of them, I'm happy to say. There's three of them before you tonight. The first one, most of these transfers are being funded by another section of the same department's budget. So, the first one is for facilities electricity, as you're well aware from the special town meeting votes in the last meeting, the last discussion on these. The electricity cost rose, and that was the same case for the facilities department. They have a savings in their salary lines of $7,000, because the new position of the carpenter was, handyman was not hired until October. So, we're going to use that to cover the electricity deficit if the board sees fit. We also have the fire department overtime, which was partially funded at special town meeting. The fire chief is here tonight. He's been working to manage those costs. Right now, we're asking for a $43,000 transfer, probably going to be somewhere around $41,000 when all is shaken out in the wash. Twenty, uh, $15,000 of that is coming from the fire department materials and supplies. The other $28,000 is coming from DPW engineering salaries for a vacant engineering position that wasn't filled until just this past month. The fire department had been curtailing their expenses to try to offset this problem. They do have, as of right now, $27,000 available, but they still have some costs left to pay and some encumbrances. So, that's why we only took, I'm only recommending that you transfer $15,000, just in case there's still some bills coming in, such as the fuel delivery we had on the 30th of June. Those types of things that you're not really assured of, and all of a sudden show up, so don't want to overtransfer out of that budget. It'll all close out to free cash regardless of where it's coming from, and if it's not spent. And then the final one is in transfer station. There is a transfer station overtime. We had been waiting to see if it would be covered through other lines in the payroll for the transfer station, and some of it was. But unfortunately, there haven't been any vacancies in transfer station. That's usually where you can recoup some of this. And that's being funded from transfer station expense from the hauling contracts. There's savings in there, and these were for enforcement costs for making sure that, you know, that there were stickers on cars, that people were using the situat bags, things were being disposed properly, the recycling was actually separated correctly, and all that helps with the savings overall. So, we're using that hauling contract funds to cover that, if the board sees fits.
So, the overtime is for extra people checking the bags and stuff?
They had, they had extra staff up there over, it was in the summertime periods, doing that.
I thought somebody was, there were some, either injuries or work or something, that people were out there and needed to use extra people up there.
We had, we actually had three instances where the overtime was majority class were, is we put some people on the weekends in the high months of the summer to look out for people that weren't using blue bags, because they were throwing some black bags in, and we were finding that to try to police that. Some of the other overtimes, we've been handling a lot of our own maintenance. The guys have been maintaining their machines on their own, as opposed to summing it out and going somewhere else for basic oil changes and that stuff, which we do on overtime. And it's a cost savings on other measures in the budget.
So, those are the three that we have before tonight, and this should be the end of it, and the advisory committee will be taking their votes on Thursday.
So, in the prior transfers, was there fire overtime in that as well?
No, we delayed doing a fire transfer for overtime until we finally pay all of fiscal 15 payroll.
But we did do forty thousand.
At special town meeting.
At special, so that, it comes in at like over eighty, I think.
Between the two?
Yeah. It's going to come in at eighty-three.
And Nancy, where's the $28,000 coming from? Because it's not on here.
Oh, it's coming from engineering salaries. So, we had a vacant engineering position that was, has now been filled.
Because Sean was promoted.
Any questions for Nancy regarding this stuff? So, we have the firefighter overtime under control, not a move, kind of?
It's amazing, we spoke back a while ago, we actually had three fire managers hired. We hired one, start in September at the Academy. The other two others received a physical study, hoping to get them in October. We're actually hiring one ahead of time, anticipating age of January 1st retirement. So, we're trying, with support of the town administration, trying to get hiring. We talked about the vacancies taking six, eight, nine months to get to the floor. So, we're trying to be proactive on that to reduce that. So, once we get these three hired, we should get where we're supposed to be.
Okay. No questions? I want a motion.
Move to transfer the sum of $7,000 from the, 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 from[1082.12]
It's two feet higher, and remember, it's deeper and there is revetment in back of it. It's a different design system. So some of these shallow walls, we're concerned that they could possibly cantilever under and actually bow under. The one at Goldstone's property did crack during the storms. We do have a lot of damage that's been out there. If you drive down Oceanside Drive now, you'll see a machine that's parked there. We've been bringing in some armor stone. We're gonna put some armor stone out front there. We've dug behind the wall and we've wrapped stone and fabric around there to try to take care of some of the water so we don't have undermining. What we had is we had a large undermining during the storms and actually the wall physically cracked in one area. So we're gonna get that shored up.
So are we using the existing wall? They build around it? How does that?
No, we'd take the wall out. We'd take the wall out. One of the sections of wall had been redone probably about 12 years ago. We look into that and see if we can reuse that wall at all and see if it matches with our system, how it can be affected. But the wall's really taken a beating over in that area. In both areas. It's part of our master plan to encompass that whole area and try to protect the basin a little more.
Any further questions? Motion?
I need the motion. Move the board to select my award the contract to provide to award the contract for construction services associated with replacement of 786 feet of concrete seawall located between Fourth Avenue and Sixth Avenue on Oceanside Drive to S.P.S. New England of Salisbury, Massachusetts for the total sum of $3,488,800.
Second?
Second by Mr. O'Toole for the discussion. Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? It is unanimous. The next one, Kevin, is?
Edward Foster. Wow.
This is the Edward Foster seawall at 138. Edward Foster, that's been breached and damaged. We've been working with the residents. We have all the easements we need. We prepared an engineering plan and went out to bid on replacing that section of wall. That is for 185 feet of concrete wall and the price is $1,289,800. That comes out to an average of about $6,971.89 per foot.
So how is it one and a half times just from to get over the?
It's a smaller section. Is the only answer that I can tell you it's a smaller section. It's tight. They don't have the same setup that they did before where they have a bigger wide-open section. We had one, two, three, four, five. We had six bidders total on that. I believe you have the second sheet that gives the breakdown of where everybody was in the bid scene.
Three.
Okay. Well, maybe it didn't go through. We had a total of six bidders. We had S.P.S., Cashman, Northern, New England Building and Bridge, Coastal Marine Corp., and E.T.N.L.
So the three that we have here are Northern, which is 1.2, 1.3 million. E.T.N.L., 1.35 million. And then Cashman, 2.3 million.
At 2.1. And there is also New England Bridge, which is 1.4. Coastal Marine, which is 1.24. And E.T.N.L., which is 1.23. So the median bid spread price on those were pretty tight. And this actually, it includes that triangle area also. The triangle area, it's not just the area right in front of the house.
So if we're looking at the houses, the driveway right across from the entrance to the Maritime Center is to the left of that if you're exiting?
To the left where that seawall breaks off. It breaks off at an angle and comes into a, and it comes into the triangle.
So does it go all the way past the houses to the right? Or does it just, where does it start?
185.
It starts right.
I know where it's breached.
Yep.
How far to the right and left of that?
That's about the center line of where it is. It goes up. The next property, we do not have an easement for, which is the rental's property. So we stop right at the property line right there. And it goes over that parcel plus the next parcel that's over there in that small triangle piece to the left of his property. We have an easement for that also. So it's that entire section from where the wall, if that makes sense, if you're familiar with it. There's a set of stairs right there and you know, you can get over on that set of stairs, I believe.
Over the people across the street?
Across the street. They've given us easements and he's looking to transfer that land and maybe give it to the top.
185 feet.
185 feet.
Kevin, how are we paying for this project?
We are paying for this project through seven different items. We have forshore protection items. We have two forshore protection items that we have from the past for $200,000 and $129,000. We've got some FEMA money that was part of that. We've got two D.C.R. grants that are gonna go towards this. Article 5 at town meeting from a 4/14 meeting. Roads and seawall money. And forshore protection from Article 22 at the town meeting, April 14 also.
Kevin, we only have the three to table here, but we will be demanding so more of the construction than our highest bidder?
1.2 for you, sir.
I'm sorry. Northern Construction is the lowest bidder.
Okay. 1.29.
I apologize, then. I was reading the base bid, not including the alternate bid. So it was a?
No, that wasn't.
Pick-up on mine if I made a error on it.
Who drew up the, was it Sampson or who drew up the?
We had Coastline Engineering draw up the plans.
Okay. All right. So if something's different or you come back to us or something like that, we can go back to them, right?
Correct.
If they should find something.
Correct. And the way we have these plans also is it's not just an open cut in hope the houses hold up. There'd be steel sheeting walls in between there. And so there's some protection. If a storm comes up the coast or anything else, we don't wanna leave a wide-open walled area that could potentially, if the weather turns on us, do damage to the harbor, do damage to the Marine Center. So that's one of the big things we did look at. We included in this. And they've given us an easement. The people. Both sections have given us easements. That's what's up to go.
One of the things that's very encouraging is that, you know, although the town is spending money to protect obviously public infrastructure, but also somebody's home, the homeowner is actually giving back easements for use in front of it.
And there's probably about a 15-foot section of wall that's damaged on the neighbor's property. It's my understanding that they are not giving us an easement, so we are stopping at the end of the property line for this particular work.
Which is unfortunate because it's only gonna get worse and it may actually compound it, but.
And there'll be beach access for 1.2 million. There's public beach access.
Yeah.
And there will be.
Correct.
Well, they give us an easement and there has to be beach access.
Yep.
So for 1.2 million, people can park at the Maritime Center and use that 185 feet.
Great. I know we've talked about this, I mean, the price variations and stuff. I'm just, I was just shocked when I just figured out that number. It seems.
Well, our original engineer's estimate for a lot of the work was closer to $7,000 per foot even for the bigger job. And I'll be honest with you, I was very worried about that when the bid was coming out. Tricia saw me, I was like a little kid. I was so happy that the bids came in so low on that larger section. And it was scale for the amount of work you do. If you can give them a larger section of work, you know, it is, you know, there's value in that. The other thing is, is that other, that same bidder went and he was filling out his bid after he got the other job, he changed all his bid work, you know, on where his prices were to S.P.S. for the, for the second job.
I think it's important too, I mean, it's the same engineering firm that did both seawalls, right?
It's the same design.
The Coastline Engineering.
Coastline Engineering. There are some elevation differences and there might be some issues with Pete. One may go down deeper. And let's not forget, this is a massive, this is a massive structure. It's a big structure and it's designed so it can be undermined, you know, so it can't be undermined. It's gonna be higher and there'll also be drainage in the back zone of the water. If the water goes over, it'll drain the water behind the seawall so we don't have that water pressure. So it's our plan that this will be a wall, it'll be around for a while.
And this seawall was undermined. That's exactly what happened. And then the successive years of the undermining actually finally cracked it. So, you know, we would've liked to have done this sooner. We're glad that we obtained the easements because this is one we were particularly concerned on and I think one that the Coastal Coalition featured frequently. But we didn't have easements until the past year, so we're really glad that we can get it done.
And these guys can start right away, can they?
This is Northern Construction. They did some work for us with FEMA. They've also done a lot of seawalls down in Marshfield. They also received one of the larger Marshfield jobs, which I think was a $5 million job somewhere in that area. So I believe they should be able to start fairly quickly. The duration of this job is we gave them a year to complete everything up to date lock, stock, and barrel. So if they get all their paperwork in time, they could be starting within a month, hopefully. It's just getting all that paperwork, getting the insurance claim, getting the insurance paperwork and everything else on the near end.
Motion?
Move to the board to select my award the contract to provide to construction services associated with the replacement of 185 feet of concrete seawall located at 138 Edward Foster Road to Northern Construction of Weymouth, Mass. for $1,289,800.
Second?
Second by Mr. Danny. Further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. One more contract.
Two more.
Two more.
Two more. This is Phase 2C Watermain contract.
I would request at this time that we put this on hold. I would like to come back to the board. I wanna do some more research. I'm not happy with some of the reviews I've had of this company and we may look, I wanna look into it a little more closely.
Okay. So moved.
Next agenda.
So I got something along those lines. Don't do one of them, sorry. Okay. So I'm gonna put that on the next meeting.
Whatever Kevin tells me about, he's ready for us.
He'll be ready.
And then the last one is for the SCADA?
SCADA project. And this was an RFP that went out. This is to do with the wastewater treatment facility. And we actually sent this out to five different engineering firms in dealing with the SCADA. And we received replies back from two different companies that could start the work up in the very near future. We have, we have a pretty good schedule on this. What SCADA does, just so that the board understands, is we have a control room in the wastewater treatment facility and we've got six computers that run most of the whole wastewater treatment plant. Those are still running on Windows 98. And the first thing that we're gonna do in this contract is replace the computers in the control room and update the software and get everything kind of more up to date that we can use. Right now, if a computer goes down, you don't get much support when you call a Windows 98 hotline. It's not there anymore.
Do they have a road reformat?
We gotta look, we're looking for the road reformat, but they still have them down there. So what we're, what we're gonna do is start updating that. And this is gonna be a long-term process. This, this takes care of the first process, but it'll be just like the I and I had talked about a couple of weeks ago. Each year, we're gonna be looking for a capital plan to continually upgrade things. For example, what the SCADA system does is it allows you to work in a control room and say you had an issue at Sand Hills Pump Station. It gives you an alert that there's something going on wrong at Sand Hills Pump Station and allows you to, say, adjust a valve, a switch a pump, or anything else. Where now, if we have a problem and it was flooded or something, we have to get a guy manually out there to turn the pump on or try to get in there. And if the pump, just say the pump station was underwater, there wouldn't be really a good way we could get at it. So this comes into electronically controlling a lot of our infrastructure with the, with the SCADA system. And it's just the very first basic step.
Only two bidders, I would choose, they left quite a bit on the table. Let's, someone lose their job. Weston Sampson, Leece is a very familiar name.
Weston and Sampson's very good. Woodwin Curran's an excellent company. You know, some of these bids can be deceiving because if they're real busy, you know, some of their prices are, I was at a loss. And we had two other companies that are very involved in SCADA that did not turn in bids just because.
They're not busy or?
They were, they were busy. They couldn't take this work on at this time. Was Ian, so I had, we had Time Bond and we had, we had Wesley Witten and we had another company also that specializes in that.
Names we're familiar with. But, all right, Weston Sampson, I wonder, they're not that busy if everyone else is?
You know, they.
How is your happy? So, I mean, Steve Peterson's a 55. This 55 grand isn't to buy the computers. It's just to do the design work for?
This is to do the design work. And part of the RFP was worded that we will try to purchase the six computers with this 55 grand and do the design work to do these future projects also and upgrade the software.
Computers, the software's included in this as well?
Computers to get some, to get the start of the software and then to update our standards. We're gonna go up to bid probably on another two to three jobs over the next few years to upgrade the SCADA system throughout the whole system.
But we're not, Weston and Sampson isn't, they're, they're an engineering firm, right?
They're an engineering firm, but they can buy the computers and supply us with the computers.
So they're just gonna consult and tell us what software and what computers?
What software we're getting and everything else, yes.
So the computers are included in 55?
The computers, the six computers are in that, I'm sorry.
That's it.
It wasn't clear.
That's, no, I think you said it, but, okay.
I think that the 55 seemed a little... So what are we getting for it? I mean, there must be a software package and you know, all.
We're getting, we're getting the six computers. They're gonna evaluate the software that we should get and get us lined up with that. We'll probably go up to bid to purchase the particular software that we're looking to do. This is for design activities. We have different control stations on how to switch out the computers and what we should switch them out with. It's a lot of engineering on changing our electronics around.
Really? And this is the top, I mean, obviously if it's, if it's Windows 98, it's old stuff.
And as I said, I love giving tours over the sewer treatment plant.
I'll go.
Marty got one. You saw the, you saw the control room.
Also Weston Sampson, I'd have some concerns.
At the low.
What they left on the table.
Kevin, are you sure there's, I don't see their computers itemized in their bid. And maybe I'm just not reading their fee, controls on property. Just wanna make sure you, we know what we're getting.
It is in the RFP that says the computers, but that's kind of a minimal cost on the hold.
It's maybe permitting, that doesn't matter.
Yeah.
It says design and permitting. Kevin, can I, can I just, maybe I can ask you a question, but I might be off base. Tell me where they put the numbers and Tricia and Nancy. How they put numbers in here doesn't really matter. It's really the bottom line, isn't it, Kevin?
The bottom line falls under our priority casks on our RFP that we put out.
As long as it meets the RFP.
As long as it meets the RFP requirements.
Am I right, Kevin? So if someone doesn't put a lot of money into design and permitting, but the next guy does, does it really matter? Bottom line?
As long as the bottom line works out.
Kevin, we're buying computers and software. This isn't, this isn't design. This is. Well, we do a road project. If someone puts a certain amount in for mobilization, demobilization, it doesn't really matter. Well, I agree. This, this seems like we're buying six computers and software, but we've got 160, 280, 300 hours of design and permitting. This looks more like a road job than a...
Well, what's the total? What's the total in design and permitting? You're gonna times what? I don't.
220? 550 or 110? So 19, 35, $45,000.
Maybe they're right.
So what's task one?
I can give you, I can give you task one. It's outlined in the bid if you'd like. It's to update SCADA computer software. Engineer will provide the option, including the six SCADA computers and associated software proposals include upgrades to allow operational staff to access SCADA functions via the internet while offline. Update control room UPS. Provide options and budgetary pricing to upgrade or replace existing wastewater treatment facility control room UPS. LCP control panel provide options and budgetary pricing to repair, replace, and upgrade the Allen Brady Bradley PLC 5 system and control LPC 3 control panel unit.
So they're actually replacing the units, not just telling you what you should replace it with?
That's part of the engineering. Then they won't actually replace that. They'll hire us, but they'll, we'll put out specs so that we can go up to bid to replace the specific LPC 3 units with appropriate units that'll, that'll fix this.
So the $26,000, they're just gonna come back and say, go to this vendor and buy these com?
No. What we'll do is we'll have to go up to bid and have a seal tight bid on some of these items. So we'll have, it'll be the labor and equipment to install the different control units in those areas.
So he's, he's got, he's got it covered in the RFP. That's what Nancy and I were just looking at and he just satisfied our concerns. Because when you wrote to award the contract, the contract is actually only four pages and essentially it says, everything we asked for in the RFP, you need to provide in your response. So they're on the hook for it.
So the RFP says?
He just read what they have to do and the, and the contract says you have to provide what's in our RFP.
Okay.
And so the contracts, the RFP and their response to the RFP.
Okay. So does anyone want to look at the RFP and vote on it next week or do we already vote for it right now? So I just asked Mar, would it matter if we made it to the next meeting, Kevin?
Um, no. I mean, we could.
We had a division meeting, if I may, today and Rick, we need to move forward on this. The Sewer Division has a lot of challenges. This is $55,000, which is $5,000 over the threshold that I have. In fact, it was presented to me for signature and I kicked it to you because it was $5,000 over, as it should. But, um, you know, it's, it's a pleasure.
We've got a control room in the treatment room. And this is gonna upgrade the computer and the software and it's gonna be updated. We're not gonna get a report that says, go buy all this stuff for 200 grand from somebody else.
You're gonna get a software system that's going to be updated through hardware that can actually handle the new software. Our biggest problem now is we have Windows 98 and as you know, we approved several hundred thousand dollars of repairs and improvements at Sewer that need to, that are 21st century now that need to talk to that.
We need to upgrade the room, but the 55 grand is gonna upgrade the room, not the maintenance company.
No. The 55 grand in, in the RFP has three particular tasks, which I kind of just outlined. One is to make the updates in that room. There are other components that are a lot more expensive. We might spend $150,000 updating different rooms. Or we might spend $200,000. But they provide us with the engineering criteria to go up to bid and go up to bid the larger LPCs in the secondary and the third tasks. And that's in the future as we, as funding becomes available. It's a, it's a two, it's a three-part RFP that we presented.
If you can wait two more weeks and maybe we could take board members to see the control system there, sort of how it operates and how it will change with Rick, that might be helpful.
I would gladly do that.
Yeah.
I mean, I've seen it, so.
I, I think we're pretty.
Yeah. I mean, we put a lot of money into SCADA for water and sewer, but.
Let's close, it'd be great if you can just give us that. Let us do that.
Yep. That should be fine.
Okay. So the last one is sewer pump station contract for SCADA.
That's it.
Yep. That was it. That was the last one.
We're done.
That's it.
Did we do the water main?
Yeah, we postponed that one.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
He asked to table it.
This SCADA has a K, this one has a C.
It's actually a C and it's SCADA.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good business. Discuss both one-day beer and wine licenses. I have a motion.
Move to grant lavishly done a one-day beer and wine license for an event to be held at the Situate Maritime Center on 7/19/15 from 11 to 3 P.M.
Second. Is that the blanket one?
Am I ahead? You're right, I jumped one. Sorry. All right, let's get to the blanket one. Okay, ready? Yep. Move to approve eight blanket one-day beer and wine licenses for events at the Situate Maritime Center.
Second.
Second by Mr. Danny. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Number two.
Ready to go to the other one, sir?
I'm moving you on.
Move to grant lavishly done a one-day beer and wine license for an event to be held at the Situate Maritime Center on 7/19/15 from 11 to 3 P.M.
Second by Mr. Harris. Further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is unanimous.
Move to grant tailor-made bartenders a one-day beer and wine license for an event to be held at the Situate Maritime Center on July 19th from 5:30 to 9:30 P.M.
Second.
Second by Ms. Curran. Further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Move to grant tailor-made bartenders a one-day beer and wine license for an event to be held at the Situate Maritime Center on July 26th from 12 to 4 P.M.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris. Further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is unanimous. Great. Now we'll get to, we saved the best for last, the complicated appointments. So let me take two minutes and have a quick conversation and some thoughts on having on this and then see how we wanna proceed. There are a number of positions in here that have exceeded the six-year rule. So technically, the positions that you hold here, you're supposed to have six years and after six years, you're not supposed to be renewed for the position. In many cases, there's not somebody else applying for that position, so you volunteer to do this and you get another term after that fact, even though you've exceeded the six years and that's great. And I wanna preface this by saying, we appreciate the fact that everyone volunteers for these positions regardless, you know? And it has no, this has no indication on the level of work that anyone's doing because all the young people are volunteering and doing a great job. So it's just really trying to abide by the rules. So what I thought we were able to do, and we haven't confirmed this yet, is if somebody has exceeded their time period, that we could renew them for one year and give somebody else the opportunity to get involved. I think what happens is people don't get involved because they don't think they're gonna be able to get a spot because the same people get renewed, but, and they aren't aware of the six-year rule. So I think in a number of cases, we need, in terms of, if somebody's already served six years and there's nobody else running for that spot, or there's somebody else running for that spot that's not qualified, do we have to extend them three additional years or just one additional year and give other people the opportunity to come in next year and apply for that spot? So at the comments from the board, on places like that, we were not clear on it.[1674.23] So at the comments from the board, on places like that, we were not clear on it. We can do one of two things. We can just vote, and if you want to vote another three-year term, because if they vote another three-year term, then those people will just get another three-year term, and we'll deal with it again in three years. Or we can hold those appointments, do them next week, once we figure out what our options are for that. Any thoughts?
I like the one-year. Just my personal opinion. Because it does buy, give that extra, you know, you take care of the immediacy of the opening, but gives other people an opportunity the following year. Maybe seeing that, that they said, "Oh, we didn't have a chance of getting on this particular board."
So we're not sure whether we can or cannot do that.
We're not sure.
But we need to get the opinion of town council.
Okay.
Any other thoughts on that?
The only thing I'd say is that I like the concept of, there is a one-year, shall we say, reservation or parking somebody there for one year. If we do that, I think we're gonna, I think the answer's gonna be, "No, you can't do that, because we haven't done it." So it's gonna be a bylaw change, which means if that's something, we should probably consider for the bylaw review. But that's premised upon the concept of the policy. The policy is something that was put together back in 98. That basically states that if you've been on a committee, board, or commission, you can serve it for two terms, if it's for six years capped. Thereafter, you get off. And we as a board, at least during my tenure, and I think prior, Sean could probably attest to it, has not been vigilant in exercising that for any of the members, which I think is an issue, again, gets into policy. Do we as a board then reaffirm the policy, whatever the number is, saying that it's a six-year maximum term limitation? And then live by it? And if the answer's yes, then that's what I think the board should do. If the answer's no, then I think then get back into kind of like the concept of what we were talking about with Waterways, which is, what's the deference? The deference goes to the discretion of the board of selectmen. So, I mean, I don't know. I don't know the answer to it. I mean, I think it's something that I think we should at least address and complete, and either say, "We're gonna abide by the six-year rule," and so be it, the policy. And that's the way it goes. But I think at this point, I know I could come up with like, well, gee, you know, some boards, you need more experience, especially if you're gonna have a 40B come before you with all these units. You don't want six or three, or actually, there's five on the board, but three voting members who have yet to go through that experience, and they're gonna get rolled over by the developer with all the attorneys and everything else. That's a concern. And it's the same with a lot of these other boards, whether it's the Board of Health, and maybe because they're dealing with health issues, or whether it's conservation, dealing with conservation and the Wetland Protection Act. I don't have a great answer to it, but I just think that those are the things that I'm willing, trying to figure out what would be the best interest for the town and for the applicants who come before us.
Anything else to add?
Nothing else to add. I agree with Sean of, it's a case-by-case basis, you know?
I also think if we're going to be vigilant and instill that policy, we should give folks some notice, so there's some notice that a particular position might be vacant and open to be filled.
And I think in a lot of cases, it's a committee that's a tough committee to be on, and the person that happens to be serving has done it for a long time, done a good job. And, you know, we don't necessarily want to see that person go, but it's only fair if Steve's been the alternate for three years, and he should get his shot also. So, okay, so I think the, I think the opinion of the board is, let's get the easy ones out of the way, and the ones that don't have those conflicts, and then when we run into those, we will postpone those, have an answer, and go right through them at the beginning of the next meeting. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. So I'm gonna try and...
One other quick question, Mr. Chair. Due to the applications and the reappointment process, which usually is undertaken in the month of June, does that create problems for any of the boards that are gonna be sitting on hearings going forward, now that we're in July?
So every appointment says, "Or until a successor is named for that very reason." It's frequent in towns. Right? So when we send an appointment card, it says, "Or until a successor is named."
So that satisfies any boards or committees or...
And I sent that to the Waterways. I sent it to Mr. White and Mr. Toppam after the last meeting.
Okay. So I'm gonna go off, I've got a bunch of spreadsheets here. I don't know where, where's the motion? Should we...
This is the most, this is the current spreadsheet. There's other spreadsheets that give you additional information, but this is the main spreadsheet.
Okay, so I'm gonna go through this as best as I can, and you correctly wanna make mistakes.
Okay.
So we'll start with the agent, because some of them we just have to make. So the agent of veterans' benefits...
Well, I think we should go by the spreadsheet.
Okay, we'll go by your spreadsheet.
Okay.
So the first one is the...
Animal Control.
Animal Control Board. So on Animal Control Board, there are five members, and two of them are, this is an easy one, there's two people on it, they're both the renewers, and they both have not served two terms, so if we appoint them, it'll be full, and there's no extra members.
I think, am I reading, is he correct on that? My understanding was, Mr. Chair, that the renewable one, the ones who are renewing are new.
Oh, wait.
They're renewing, but there are two actual vacancies, and there are two new applicants. So by renewing the present members and accepting the new members, then we have a completed board on the Animal Control Board.
Vacancies and openings do not include the new ones.
Okay.
Yep, I have, I looked at the spreadsheet.
Say that again?
So there's four people that are looking to be on the Animal Control Board.
I gave you this chart, okay? Just as a guide to see who's on the board and who's currently...
Lorraine, I have a question, not to interrupt you, but this is the one I just got from you.
Yeah, this is one we're gonna use.
Yeah, John's is different.
Mine's different, too.
John has two new on Animal Control Board, I only have one.
There's only one new on Animal Control Board.
Ryan Capadano.
Right, correct.
Ashley Davis.
Ashley Davis.
They have a different one than I have.
You're not looking at last month's?
Yes.
You're not looking at 7/7?
Right. So last month's Ashley's not doing it anymore?
You gotta have today's.
That was the one in the packet.
The updated one. It's the one I used from the packet.
Sean, I talked about it, but I have a different one.
All right, but that's okay.
So is Ashley Davis not interested anymore? She was...
Animal Control Board. I'd have to look at that. I'm not sure, I'm not sure what happened there.
Okay, so let's appoint the three that we know, then there'll be one opening, and we'll figure out Ashley for next meeting.
Okay. So I'll make a motion. I'll move to appoint, can I do it all in like...
To renew?
Do I have to do each, I'll do each one. I move to appoint Nancy Toll?
Yes.
I think you could do all three of them together.
Nancy Toll, Betty Johnson, and Brian Capadano to the Animal Control Board for a term of...
Three years.
Three years, or until a successor is named.
Second.
So, do you have that?
Second by Mr. O'Toole. Now, if we also put this other Ashley person on there to fill the board, are they all gonna have the, all of them will expire in the same year?
They will on this board, because this board, there is still another person called Tony Gentile that expires next year.
So this board isn't stagnant?
And we had some people drop off the board. It was more staggered than it is now.
Right, so that's why I wondered if the new people would only have a one-year term.
We could look at that other fourth person, I'm looking at Ashley.
So I have a question, is, are these for three-year terms or three-year overlapping terms?
These are all three, right?
Three-year terms, yes.
But to Tony's question, all expiring at the same time?
Well, these three people will be, there's other people on this board.
But it could be four, no, it could be one.
And it's possibly... When someone gets busy next year and they resign, and then that's gonna change things for the board. Could you possibly three years, you have three new people?
But it could, it will be four, if this Ash...
Yeah.
Four.
Let me grab a five. Mr. Chair, can I ask a point of clarification on the Animal Control Board?
Yeah, one expired in 14.
What is, Lorraine, the way you're saying it, I need to...
You see that one expired in 14, is that what you're looking at?
Yeah. What is, what is this number? Is this when the term is up?
The expiry.
Or is this when they start?
So that's why it's messed up, is Nancy Toll's was up in 14, it looks like.
Right. So if she was renewed last year, why are we renewing her again?
So I would not encourage you to use this. There's a number of errors on it.
I wasn't, so, hey, I'm not confused.
So the question I think that we're asking is, if you have a five-member board or a three-member board, even though they all have three-year terms, they are not the same year, they overlap, so one's 14, 15, 16 in terms of expiration. So it would appear that if you have three terms here for three years, and it's only a five-member board, something is amiss.
Well, that's why if you look at it, that's with the 14, 15, and the 16, they're all offsetting. That's why it probably is correct on this particular board.
On this one?
Yes, if you look at four, so I just think that one of them, this Anthony Gentile, his doesn't expire till next year. I think maybe we're a year behind on a Nancy Toll somehow.
So here's what we're gonna do. We're gonna postpone Animal Control Board till next week.
Yes. Thank you.
We're just gonna do the easy ones.
And I will, I will work with Lorraine on all these directly between...
So I'll withdraw my motion.
So beautification...
I think you need to have second to withdraw?
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris.
We're going by this, right?
I just, I just want to withdraw the motion, so now you can move on.
I don't think we have to do second.
Yeah, I already did.
I'll move to withdraw the motion. Second, my sir, so all in favor?
Aye. Okay, move to appoint Betty Foster, archivist. Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
We got one done, that's beautiful.
Okay. Beautification. So they need up to 12 members.
You still want to keep on...
Mary Sensonito.
All right.
I'll go through this.
So I'll move, go ahead, move. Apply Mary Sensonito, Assistant Town Accountant. Second.
For one year.
For one year.
For one, for one year. Okay, I gotta put that down here.
Second by Mr. Danny. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now I want beautification.
You just wanted to say beautification, so now... Two, three, five, and then we have, oh, easy.
So all five.
Easily.
Yep.
But they're overlapping terms, right?
Well, and you need to consider Lori Hall, who's a...
They're all renewing terms, it says here. The beautification.
Now, they're three.
Not to look at that.
Yeah.
Now, right here, just what I'm looking at, three overlapping terms.
beautification is a three-year term.
Okay.
And that says one year, so...
But it's up to 12 members, no, six.
There are a lot of members on there that are staggered.
But it says one-year term written. What is that?
That's why we're not using it.
Ignore that.
It's a three-year term.
So do we put all five of these on a three-year? There's 12 members, so...
We want to keep them there. If we can put them for six or 10, I'd do it, just so that they do all the beautifications around town.
So if we put all five of these in a three-year term?
All right, I'll move to appoint Leslie Danelle, Stephen Dorsey, Kathy McCormick, Lori Hall, and Marian Pelleco to the Beautification Commission for a term of three years, or until a successor is named.
Second.
Second by Mr. O'Toole. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We're gonna hold off on the Board of Health.
We also have that Lori Hall, we've had two other interested committees, which you also need to consider, Historic Commission and CPC. Vote, let's just do by commission.
Yeah, we just put the wrong beautification.
Okay. Just letting you know.
So we're gonna skip four to half.
Please, if you want.
And we're gonna go to Board of Registers.
Move to appoint Wayne Francis, who is work registered, for a term of three years, let's see...
Yeah, it's three.
For a term of three years, or until a successor is named.
Second.
Second by Mr. Danny. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So move Kathy Curran.
Move for appoint Kathy Curran to the Board of Registers for a term of three years, or until a successor is named.
Second.
Second by Mr. Danny. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll move to appoint Patricia Lambert to the Bylaw Review Committee for a term of three years.
Second.
Second by Ms. Curran. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll move to, okay, what was it?
Can we do these all together?
Yeah, why not?
Three years.
I'll move to appoint Albert Bangert, Mike Davis, Brianna Trefal. Did I say your name right?
You...
Trefiera.
Keep that out, please.
Keep that.
Point of order. Hold on Brianna's.
All right, well, I'll move to appoint Albert Bangert and Michael Davis to the Cable TV Committee for a term of three years, or until a successor is named.
Second, somebody?
Second.
Second by Mr. O'Toole. All in favor?
Aye.
So two renewals, and Brianna, do we have to check the bylaws?
No. The issue with Brianna is that she's an employee of the cable department, and she cannot be on the cable committee and a member, as she has a financial interest and it's a conflict of interest.
Did you hear that?
I see.
Okay.
So you can choose. And the other option, of course, is that the entire cable commission is named as a special municipal employee, but that town has traditionally not gone that route.
And we only have two vacancies, right?
So it's not that personal, it's just you can't, you know...
So there's, well, there's one other thing on this one, is Marie Fidler is an associate member, and I don't know if she wants to be a full-time member, because there's an open.
I don't believe she does.
Did you talk to her?
I'll check that out.
Okay.
But is there a...
There is one, Tracy Kitty resigned.
Tracy resigned, yep.
Okay, so Brianna, why don't you think about it, and tell us next meeting what you want to do? You can't get paid by the committee and be on the committee, and give yourself a raise. So, and then we'll find out about Mrs. Fidler also.
And if you can do that, then I'm gonna get on the committee and do the same thing. Yeah. All right. Move to appoint, next one?
Yep.
Judith Byrne-Ariel to the Citizen Representative, Citizen Representatives to the Scholarship Committee for a term of...
One year.
One year, or until a successor is named.
Second.
Second by Mr. O'Toole. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So we're, the CONCOM is one of those committees that...
We're gonna clarify.
We're gonna get that clarification, so we're gonna skip CONCOM.
CPC, there is an issue?
CPC, I don't think there is. I think...
I think he actually stepped off, and didn't restart.
Didn't he restart?
Right, but there's, but there's also David Friedman wanting to be on CPC also, so.
And Waterways.
Right, so.
Or.
Or, yeah, not me, it was four.
So we have four appointments, and then there are liaisons from the committees. Two, three, four. And of the people that we could put on are Karen Conley, Adam Conrad, Marla Minier, Josh McCain, who served for 10 years already, although he did skip a year.
Yeah, break two, yeah.
Right, but still, he's been it for, done it 10 times.
I didn't include the two years, you skipped the ten years. I did not include it.
But doesn't the clock start running after, if you skip out for two years and come back? Doesn't it start running all over again?
Yep.
Yeah, so he.
Well, they have to be consecutive years, but he's still done it 10 times, so. You know, it's a one-year term, so different people get involved. So the only other person that you could consider, I guess, is David Friedman. Like I mentioned before, so he was interested in it, and then so did this Lori Hall. Maybe she was interested in it.
She was only just appointed to the animal, to the beautification, yeah, we did.
Yes.
Yeah, I remember coming in.
So beautification is probably one that you could do.
You could do both.
You could water flowers in. So do you want to?
We also, we also have one vacancy on Historic Commission, and she's applied for that too, and she's the only one that's applied for that.
Yeah.
Oh, I thought Mike Cuneo applied for that. He's got a certificate as well. Mike Cuneo also applied for it. Maybe is he the only one, Mike Cuneo?
Well, he was an associate, and we made him a full member.
Well, we have to vote for it, so he would, that's the open decision.
Okay, true.
So Historic Commission is one of the true commissions that can have associate members by statute. Remember, we had that thing from Jim Toomey of the ones that can.
So does anyone want to make a motion for CPC, or do you want to postpone until next week? You make a motion.
I could check with Lori Hall and see if she's interested in possibly an alternate position on Historic, or consideration for CPC if you'd like.
We probably would need that answer, right?
Unless somebody else can make a motion.
Yeah, multiple people are interested in CPC, and she's already just been appointed to one committee.
Alright, I'll make a motion. I'll move to appoint Karen Conley, Adam Conrad, Marla Minier, and David Friedman to the concert, the Community Preservation Commission for a term of one year, or until a successor is named.
Okay, now I don't have David Friedman on my list. Is that still a good name?
He's under Waterways.
He's under book, yeah, he wanted to vote.
He wanted one on the other, I think.
Right, he's got, yes. So there's a motion.
I'd like to go in Waterways.
Six, page six.
Okay.
I don't think we should just look at the new person.
Okay, so let's make motions one at a time.
On this one, John.
Anybody can make a motion.
Well, he just said he wanted to step on his toes. I move to appoint Karen Conley to the, second, to CPC for a period of three.
One year.
Or until a successor is named.
Second.
Second by Mr. O'Toole, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to appoint Adam Conrad to the CPC, for a term of one year, or until a successor is named.
Second.
Second by Ms. Curran, further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move for Marla Minier to the CPC Committee for a term of one year, or until a successor is named.
Second.
Second by Mr. O'Toole, further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
As well, I make a motion. I'll move to appoint David Friedman to the CPC for a term of one year, or until a successor is named.
Second.
Second by Mr. O'Toole, further discussion?
I'd rather see Mr. Friedman on Waterways. I think that's where he expressed his primary interest in, he's in front of us. And with Dick leaving, I think he's going to be a strong president, we need that committee. That's where my preference is, to see David.
And I totally agree with Mar on that. And that's what I remember, and I thought Dave's first choice was Waterways.
Because there's also 20 people trying to get on Waterways.
Yeah, no, that's, so Mar, I just. Show my hand.
So there's a motion, and second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Who was opposed?
Aye.
So three to two, it passes. And custodian of tax title property?
I'll move to appoint Pamela Abitabli as the custodian of tax title property for a term of one year, or until a successor is named.
Second.
Second by Mr. O'Toole, further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is unanimous?
I move to approve Donald Knapp, custodian of veterans' graves for a period of one year, or until a successor is named.
Second.
Second by Mr. Daly, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, is unanimous?
I move to appoint Christopher McConaughey as the, to the Economic Development Committee for a term of three years, or until a successor has been, has been named.
Second. Quick comment, he hasn't been two terms yet, has he?
No, this will be his second.
This will be his second?
Yeah.
Yeah, because I think it started just.
They haven't been around for two terms for anybody.
Yeah, it's only the first.
Yeah, so the, yeah.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's a three-year term, you said.
Yes.
Fair Housing Officer?
I'll move to appoint Patricia Vinkasey as the Fair Housing Officer for a term of one year, or until a successor is named.
Second by Ms. Curran, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Fence Viewer?
I move to appoint Paul Murphy as the town's official fence viewer for a term of one year, or until a successor is named.
Second.
Second by Mr. O'Toole, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
I move to appoint Neil Duggan as the town's field driver for a term of one year, or until a successor is named.
Second by Ms. Curran, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The guy who takes a sale.
There's one opening, and there's one new person.
So Historic Commission.
Just put her on something else, beautification, but that's okay?
Yes.
So Historic Commission, we're going to wait on, because there's someone that's gone over seven, over their term. We've got to figure out what, what to do there.
But couldn't we just appoint that one person, the new person? And get that person on Historic, and then discuss the other one later?
Let's just hold on.
Well, yeah, then there's an associate that you don't know whether they want to be a full member, so we're going to hold off on that one.
I move to appoint Sergeant Gerald O'Brien as the licensing agent for a term of one year, or until a successor is named.
Second. Second by Mr. Harris, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to appoint Pamela Abitabli as the local auction permit agent for a term of one year, or until a successor is named.
Second by Mr. Harris, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Alright, before I nominate, is this a three-year term or one-year term? Does anybody know?
For Logan.
For Logan?
They're one-year terms.
Alright, I move to appoint Gary Banks to the Logan Airport Community Advisory Committee for a term of one year, or until a successor is named.
Second.
Second by Ms. Curran, further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, is unanimous?
I move to appoint Gary Banks to the Massachusetts Board Authority Community Advisory Committee for a term of one year, or until a successor is named.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to appoint Albert Bangert to the Mass, Massachusetts Bay Transportation Authority Liaison for a term of one year, or until a successor is named.
Second.
Second by Mr. O'Toole, discussion? None, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. On this one, does anyone know how long Joby's been on that commission? Has he been more than one term?
I think he's been there eight years.
I think his dad, yeah, so I think we have to hold off on this one.
Yeah, Joby's been there for a while.
This one, no one else has applied for?
Yeah, but there's an alternate member.
The alternate member wants to be, I, both of them sent me emails.
So the alternate wants to stay alternate?
Yes. And I think there's going to be a lot of activity this year.
As long as, as long as we're clear that the alternate wants to stay alternate, then.
Wait, is, I thought the question was how long they've served in this position?
Right, right, because we have to find out whether it's a one-year renewal or a three-year renewal. So we'll have to come back.
Or it's a six-year rule.
Well, he's, he's already served six years.
Right, that, okay.
So we'll come back to that one.
Okay.
This, this position is not in the bylaws.
Which one?
The North River Commission.
We can find out.
Alright, Public Building Commission, is that a three-year term?
Yes.
Or a two-year term, anyone know?
Three.
Three-year. I move to appoint Jacqueline Carr to the Public Building Commission for a term of three years, or until a successor has been named.
Second.
Second by Mr. O'Toole, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye. Got to find my next page, here it is. I move to appoint Michael Hager to the Public Building Commission for a term of three years, or until a successor has been named.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This brings us to the Recreation Commission, Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Yes, so this one, we'll take a quick look. Yep, yeah, so we need to find out, so we have to hold this one.
Okay. And then the next would be the Situate Cultural Council, which has six vacancies. Right now, we have, it looks like two, two applicants that are brand-new, so that would fill two of the six vacancies. I'll move Kristen Soder to Situate Cultural Council for a term of three years, or until a successor is named.
Second by Mr. Harris, all in favor?
Aye. And I, I move to appoint Kristen Sherman to the Situate Cultural Council for a term of three years, or until a successor is named.
Second.
Second by Mr. O'Toole, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous?
Mr. Chair, may I ask a question?
Yes.
Back to Recreation, when we're checking on the six-year rule, does that mean that's going to be the one vacancy, or is there another vacancy, Lorraine, that?
There's another vacancy, but there's also one, two, three associate, two associate members who are not sure if they want to come up and fill the vacancy.
Alright, so we'll get a summary of the total Recreation.
And you have an associate that has a term expiration, but there's no provision in the bylaws, or the charter, or the board's policy for Recreation to have any associates at all.
So we'll get a.
Somebody needs associates, if you point.
But somebody's, like, I know Al Kozlovsky's been on all the meetings.
Right.
We asked him if he wanted to actually fill a vacancy that's going to be.
Yeah, because if we appoint him, that's my first meeting.
Yes, I think we appoint him.
As an associate.
I'm sure.
Associate, no. Okay, so we just need to summarize that commission.
Okay.
Okay, so, who's this one?
I nominate Ann Burbine to the South Shore Coalition for a life term, providing she gives me and knits me a scarf. I withdraw that motion. I'll nominate Ann Burbine to the South Shore Coalition for a term of one year, or until a successor is named.
Second.
Second by Mr. O'Toole, further discussion? Sean, any discussion?
Nope.
It has to be after 10.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 I nominate Kevin Cafferty to do the South Shore Recycling for a term of one year, or until a successor is named.
Please, please hold on that.
Hold.
Hold?
Yep.
Then I withdraw my motion.
No one second, is it?
No one second, okay, good. Alright, can I go to the next one? That's a, is this a three-year or a one-year? One-year?
One-year.
Alright, I nominate Jack Manning to the South Shore Regional School District as a representative for a term of one year, or until a successor is named.
Second.
Mr. Curran, it's only a one-year term. And no one else wants to do it. Second by Mr. Harris, all, discussion? So Sean mentioned that Jack Manning's been doing this for a long time. It's a one-year term, and nobody else is trying to do it, so that's why.
And I couldn't think of a better person, so I, no one's.
And Jack is chairman of that committee now.
Yeah, that'd be tougher.
Does a great job.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is unanimous?
I nominate Patricia Vinkasey to the State Ethics Commission for a term of one year, or until a successor is named.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Finally, I nominate Albert Bangert as surveyor of lumber and measure of wood and bark for the town of Situate for a term of one year, or until a successor is named.
Second.
Second by Mr. O'Toole, more, any discussion on the measure of bark?
Not tonight.
As opposed to?
Seeing no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. How about the tree warding? I don't want to nominate George Story to be the tree ward.
Oh, I missed that one, alright.
Who's George Story to the?
But nobody else knows about him there. I guess in this case, nobody else is looking to do it.
What exactly does it do?
Is required.
Yeah.
Do you?
George Stories retired from the tree park, I suppose. Doesn't anyone know more about this position than him?
He's willing to do it.
And he has a license to do it.
So move to appoint George Story to the position of the tree ward for a term of
One year.
One year, or until a successor is named.
Second.
Second by Mr. O'Toole, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so now Traffic and Rules. These are one-year terms.
And there's one vacancy.
So that should work, right?
Yep.
One renew, plus Chris.
So there's an error on this. Mrs. Cook has not been on this committee for over a year.
But she was at the meeting the other night when I was here.
She was?
Yeah, to the past two nights.
She's, she's been on the committee, she just hasn't been the chair. She resigned as chair.
Yes, I stand corrected, okay. So Paul resigned.
He was the chair.
He was the chair. He took over after Dottie, that's why I'm confused. Okay, thanks. So there's one vacancy. So Mr. Bagley would be.
Are these all one-year appointments?
Yep, yep.
I move to appoint Christopher Bagley, Dorothy Cook, Kevin Cafferty, Mark Thompson, Alfred Elliott to the Traffic Rules and Regulations Committee for a term of one year, or until a successor is named for either one of them, any one of them.
Second.
Second by Ms. Curran, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So Waterways.
Mark Yan called today at about 6:30, and then no longer interested in Waterways.
So we didn't need him, no, were?
No, he was supposed to come to save the. Oh, he was a new candidate?
So. We've actually, you know, the only confusing thing here is that there are 10 or so associate people. And we haven't technically heard from six or seven of them, whether they want to be up for appointment for a slot.
And emails went on to all of them from their chair. And they have not responded, except for two associates.
So John Murphy, Joe Schmidt, I think somebody knew him. Jesse Frank, you know, let's hold this one, and just reassure that those people aren't expecting to move up into open slots to be in consideration for the, for the five open positions.
Okay, can we talk about one other thing?
Yep.
What are we going to do about associates on this? Are we going to clean the slate now? Because we.
Yes.
Alright, okay, that's the board's intention. So at our next meeting, we won't approve any associate member, so their next meeting, if anyone's welcome to go, but there's no such thing as an associate member.
For Waterways, the bylaw, not state statute, so state statute provides for some associates and alternates. For, under the town of Situate bylaws, the only committee or board that provides for associates is Waterways, however, it didn't specify, it does not specify a number. I would suggest that two is probably what the statute provides for Conservation, Historic Commission, whatever.
So we really need to hear from these 10 people whether they want to be up.
But if we don't, you know, Lorraine's reached out to them already.
She has.
Don't reach out till the minute we don't hear from them in two weeks.
Well, the chairman has reached out.
Yeah, which is the same.
Two of the associates have returned, sent in apps, one requesting an open position, one requesting to stay as an associate.
But doesn't everything change once you notify them that they're, most of those associate positions are going to go away? Doesn't that maybe give them the incentive to possibly move to a full-time position? Should they have that?
But an associate has no authority, other than just someone going to a meeting.
Not my point, Tony. What I'm saying is, if an associate thinks they're going to be reappointed as an associate, they may remain in that position. But if they find out that that position is being done away with, they may actually want to become a full-time member. They need to have that information before we can do this.
I think that's fair.
So we'll reach out, and can the board be, can you just send in the fact that there should be two associates and not 10?
I, I think that's correct.
Before we do, what's the total number of voting members on the committee?
Nine. Nine.
Nine.
And 12 associates. That's why you're struggling with this. You're dealing with.
Yeah, I have no issues with two. I was only asking because I'm trying to figure out the, the, the numbers. If you got nine, they're plenty. They're plenty on the board. There's no need for 12 associates.
Yeah, do we have to do that now?
No, I mean, that's really a my.
It's, it's very.
The board has the, this, Tony's right. The board has the discretion to appoint 12 associates or no associates.
Or two.
It says associates, or?
It just says associates.
And an associate doesn't have a term.
So two's fine.
No, so technically, in the absence of a term, you'd probably do one year, but remember, the statutory intent, at least, of an associate is to learn a complicated broader committee, so they can eventually become a full member. So someone shouldn't just keep wanting to be an associate forever, unless they don't feel after a year, I suppose, they're confident enough to move up.
Good, so we're going to hold on that one.
We'll hold on Waterways, then we have Water Resources.
So how do we?
I mean, they, I'm just trying to wonder. Water Resources has four vacancies in addition to their renewals.
I just have one, because Jerry is.
Right, so I'll make a motion.
Okay, yeah.
I'll move Martha Cook and Shirley Young as members of the Water Resources Committee for a term of three years. Forget what I was going to say, or until a successor is named.
Second. Second by Mr. O'Toole, further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're going to hold the CPA. And now we can
Yeah, there's a page here that we put together for you, the Coastal Advisory Commission.
Well, that's where my confusion comes in, as far as, like, an outland person
So we're going to hold that so we can go over our notes from tonight, and look at that, and then we'll appoint that at the next meeting. And also the beach. I don't think we have Steve Tripp and
The beach, you're okay to do those appointments.
I don't think we can, because if we don't do Coastal, some people want to do the one or the other.
Actually, the only ones who wanted to do
Nancy Faye.
Carol Walsh, the beach study, Nancy Faye said no, she wanted the
Carol Walsh, Carol Walsh for sure, want a beach.
Yes, that would be a good
And Tripp. Peggy Dinger said she
And Louise. Louise?
Yeah, Peggy Dinger said one or the other.
Right. Yeah, Steve Tripp wanted the beach, so we could do those two for beach, for sure.
Yeah.
So what is the beach
Can we hold off till we do the Coastal Commission, though? Just so, because there were some that expressed interest in both.
Yes. All right, it's late, the proposal is off till next week.
Sounds good.
So, right, I will get with you this week, and we will get all this organized, so we can And get emails out to people, and call whoever we need to do to find out.
So should we throw this out there?
If you want to.
Well, this is more accurate.
Yeah, I have more accurate one, right?
We'll get different information.
So Please destroy that one, that needs to be updated and corrected, there's a number of things we have to update on that.
We'll go over all of it.
So just get rid of everything we have here?
Yeah, we'll reach into information for the next
Because a lot of it's done anyway, so we don't have to look through a lot of it.
No, that's right, we'll distill it into one form.
I want to keep it for confusion next meeting.
Okay, so the next thing is review and discuss the liaison position, door selectmen to the Veterans Services Advisory Committee. So let's review and discuss.
Okay, well, I was, you know, I was, I am, I guess, or was, the liaison, and the committee sort of went afunk after a period of a couple of months.
Good job.
So I'd like to, yeah. All of a sudden we have the police involved. But I'd like to, you know, I'd like to continue to do that, once we get this thing up and running.
So what So the committee is non-existent?
It's non-existent at the moment. Now, the question is whether we go with, whether it's going to be a new charter, or how we're going to go about that.
Okay, so who wants to work on that?
I would be one to work on that.
So Mr. Knapp proposed a number of recommendations to reconstitute the original charge for the Veterans Advisory Council because it was problematic.
Sure.
And that has been sitting on my desk for a long time, because I haven't gotten to it, so
Well, I can work with Dawn on that to try and get it.
Yeah, I can give you the folder he gave me, and if you can, that'd be terrific.
Yeah.
Great.
Done.
So if you do work on how that should proceed, we'll deal with that
And then the board would have to vote on the new
Charter?
Or whatever, yeah.
And the budgets.
Exactly. And then we need to get, at that point, get some applications in, I know there's people that are very interesting.
Yep.
Correspondence.
Sure. We have one letter from Bill and Allison Sprague to Kevin Cafferty. Kevin, thank you for your quick response to our email requesting the clear, to clear the seawall stairs located across from 139 Glades Road. Especially nice that people can use them during this upcoming Fourth of July weekend. Special thanks to your DPW workers for doing such a nice job, we certainly appreciate your efforts. The Minute Beach Improvement Association. So thank you to Bill and Allison Sprague for taking the time, and thanks to Kevin and his team for responding to the
And Bill Graham as well.
Shaun, anything? So this is, any other new business that you want, Mar? I can go back to the Marty, any new business you want to go over? Other businesses?
What about the flyer, we're not, the Sharks Amongst
Why don't you bring that up?
Okay.
I think on August 13th, there is a event at the St. Luke's Hall that's going to be
August 15th, actually, 2:00 PM, St. Luke's, Dutton Hall.
For shark awareness. Or, this happens to be Shark Week, so you could just watch Discovery Channel.
Tagged a big one in Shadum today.
I saw that.
Yeah, I saw that this morning.
Great, so that'll be a good, good speech on August 15th at St. Luke's, at what time, Marty?
It's at 2:00 PM.
2:00 PM.
St. Luke's.
Shaun, anything?
No, no, Mr. Chair.
Move it back to you?
I don't.
Okay, no, I do. Just a couple of things. One, I want to thank the DPW department for cleaning the beaches. I love the Fourth of July, I think it's one of the best holidays this town has. Peggyity Beach was packed with families, and it gets dark very quick, and everybody leaves all their junk there and vacates the beach. And at about 6:30 the next morning, it was spotless. So somebody went out there and cleaned all it up, emptied the trash cans, and had it ready for about 10,000 people the next day who sat on the beach all day. So I want to thank all those people, and at Homarop also. It was spotless early, early the next morning, so whoever does that, thank you, you did a great job. Fire and Police, thank you for all the work of getting us through that holiday. There's always that kind of, I know we all feel the, the kind of, what's going to happen, now that the bonfires are gone, I think the risk has gone out a little bit. But they did a great job, and the reason it goes so smoothly is because of the work that they do. So thank you for all the police out there and monitoring the situation. Homarop was still packed, there was about an hour and a half line to get off of Homarop at about 10:30 when the police were telling people to leave the island. And, you know, again, because they do a good job, we don't have huge issues there. I want to thank the people that got Katra, actually, all of us, and Tricia, everyone behind getting the shuttle up and going. It's been a great addition to the town. Again, John sometimes mentions social media, of course, they have a heyday with all the negative aspects of it, but there's so much positive going on. It's a pilot, we know it doesn't go to North Situate, we tried to get it to go to North Situate, and there's not enough money to do that yet, but we're looking into it. And what we hope to do, as Tricia mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, get together with them after, say, two or three weeks, and get feedback from the community. Feel free to email me or any of the other selectmen into your, your thoughts on the process, and get them to tweak the process. It's, it's four days old, so we'll work out the kinks, and it'll be a great, great addition to the community. I went to the Plumeth County meeting the other day, our thriving county government, and
Eye-opener? Was it an eye-opener?
Um, yeah, it was, you know, they're basically in charge of the court buildings and the registry of deeds. But they did pass a balanced budget, and it was the first time that they did a budget where they didn't have to take money from selling land or selling some sort of property. So I know they had to do some layoffs to get there, but they felt good about it, and, and I liked the fact that it was balanced without having to take extra sources of revenue, so that was good. The other thing is, I know that people are still getting some brown water. You know, I wish there was an easy answer to this, we apologize for the fact that you do get brown water, we all get brown water also, and it really stinks. But just know that we're still working on it, and it's, hopefully, it's temporary. And again, we sympathize with you, and please just call DPW and let us know where it is, and we'll do whatever we can to expedite the processes to fix it. Not that there is any. And anything else? Anything else for the town, for the upcoming week?
Oh, yeah, Souci Ambri, our sister city's going to be coming. So if you start seeing some French flags, it's because the sister city representatives and high schoolers are going to be coming, and I think in time for their, oh, that's something different. In time for their Bastille Day, which is July 14th. Now the count, you can talk about the count.
I have that memo. Does anyone know about
The Marquis, the former Marquis de Lafayette, although that is not his name or title, apparently is coming to the town to take a look at the carriage, whatever you call it, I forgot what it was called historically, you know. And that's at the Cudworth, Cudworth House. Is it going to be all fixed, finished by then? They're going to restore it. Is the restoration going to be completed? I have no idea, I doubt it.
The funds just got approved, so
Well, I didn't know how much So he's coming the 16th, I think it is.
Yep.
Good. Well, that being said, if I can have a motion to adjourn and sign documents?
Some moves.
I'll accept it, second by Mr. Harris, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good night, everybody.